Okay, so we are then adjourned of our regular meeting and we will move immediately right on to our work-study session. And so I'd like to call to order the November 13th, 2017 City Council Work-Study Session. Start again with a roll call, just to renew it for the record.
Mayor, we can stipulate for the record that everybody's still present if you like.
That's fine. So even though we are here at the dais rather than on the floor as we oftentimes are for our work-study sessions, the rules still remain the same. This provides a less formal setting for the mayor and council to discuss specific topics at length with each other and the city staff. The work-study session provides an opportunity for staff to receive direction from the council and for the public to observe these discussions. I'd want to emphasize that even though there may be occasions that we will make, we will take a vote, it won't be for action. It will be simply to make sure we establish a consensus of opinion of anything that we choose to move forward for the staff to do or not. So I just want to emphasize that point because there seems through the years to be some confusion on that, so I just wanted to emphasize that a little bit more. So, we do allow, in work-studies, a little bit differently than a council meeting, we do allow for a total of 15 minutes to be set aside at the beginning of each work-study session for a public comment. The comments are limited to the one item on the agenda. Please see that the city clerk, if you have thoughts or suggestions on the work-study session items you would like the council to consider. So, excuse me. If you'd like to speak on any of the subjects, it is again the white cards, that is for the 15 minutes at the beginning for public comment, but if you'd like to give us written comments on a yellow card, as was described before, they are also available at the clerk's desk and we would read those through the proceedings. Okay, moving right on to our order of business. Our first item is the Tourism Strategic Plan and Downtown Tourism-Related Economic Feasibility Study. And the presenters, as I understand from here, is Karen Churchard, our Tourism and Events Director, and John Katz of CSL International. Karen, I presume you'll direct as necessary.
Yes. Yes, I will. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I wanted to give you first a quick overview of the Tourism Strategic Plan, which will then lead us to our Economic Feasibility Study.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I'll tell you what, I've just been reminded by my very, very diligent vice mayor here to my left that in order to facilitate our conversation uninterrupted, we'll go to we'll go to public comment if I had them. Well, thank you, Ms. Jager. All right, and so if you'd want to stand by for a second, Karen, pardon the false start there. Start with Patty Badenoch, followed by Bob Pejman.
Why should I care about this document? Because I am a resident of 44 years who have raised a beautiful family, all who live in Scottsdale and who have children of their own that are all here. Scottsdale has many virtues that attract residents, shoppers, and visitors who find it accessible, convenient, and different. However, some of these virtues are starting to disappear because it is evident that new development is replacing what used to exist. So the question at the forefront of the new draft is, how does the character of new projects compromise the downtown qualities as it develops and to what degree? The outcome of this draft should reflect a distinct downtown landscape rather than transform it to the proverbial "any town USA." Just because you run out of dirt should not lend leeway to go up any more than it should give credence to feed the revenue monster and to grain blade the preserve. Adjust the budget, prioritize needs, cut out the favoritism that is merely at the benefit of a few. Live within your means, just as we are expected to do. All decision-making should be predicated on the character of the downtown districts with the exception of the Bar District. That should be dismantled. The negative reputation of criminal activity it has incurred regarding the drugs and alcohol abuse is a slap in the face to our founding father, Winfield Scott, and it has specifically diminished the safety and welfare to our surrounding neighborhoods. I specifically cite the historic Villa Monterey. Does this permissiveness really pay for itself? To become an enabler, exploiting of use, our use fragrant behavior is a disgrace. Parking. The parking capacity is finite, and that should be your barometer, your guidepost to curtail more density, not exacerbate it. To penalize the shopkeepers with parking meters is not the answer. The call in the distance is getting louder for the need to create a new revenue source because of the possible actual decline in tourism is loudest among those of you who have created the problem in the first place. So let's stay unique. You must recognize and act in accordance. And finally, with the districts, the Business Improvement District, it reads, in my opinion, like a mini Gestapo HOAs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badenoch. Next is Bob Pejman.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm Bob Pejman. I own Pejman Gallery in downtown Scottsdale. And the city basically paid $200,000 for these 127 pages. And what are in these 127 pages? Recommendations to improve Scottsdale. I've read them, and the recommendations, they range from great to so-so to just plain bad. The irony is that the best recommendations don't cost much money, if any. For example, on page 31, it's recommended that we follow the lead of three successful cities to change our zoning laws in certain parts of downtown to improve our tenant mix, and this move will organically fix a lot of the problems we have in downtown. In my opinion, the worst recommendation in the report is to bring out-of-state artists, spend $2 million of our money, or our customers' money, to finance storefronts and living expenses and essentially finance freeloadings. The fact that this recommendation was made while we have an established art district, including a $13 million investment in the Museum of the West, is just mind-boggling. Wouldn't it have been much wiser to recommend the promotion and marketing of the existing art district and the assets that we have there? But then again, we don't pay consultants to recommend the obvious and the practical. But putting aside which recommendations will get council support tonight, we still have to worry about how they get funded. So the report recommends a variety of funding options. The two most controversial ones are paid parking and Business Improvement District, which is also the same as BID. The first option, paid parking, is usually proposed to solve a parking management problem, but here it's not. It's recommended for sole purpose of raising money with absolutely no regard to its disastrous impact on the local merchants. Let's be clear, to put paid parking in downtown while the rest of Scottsdale has free parking constitutes a form of discrimination against the downtown businesses. Paid parking, which basically kills the businesses and reduces the city's tax, sales tax base, basically amounts to, while you're raising money from the meters, is negated by the loss of sales tax revenue from the merchants. So why bother? As far as the creation of the BID, it's known, it's a known fact that after the failed BID attempt in 1997, we just don't have the majority, 50% plus, vote from the property owners. So it's proposed that we basically gerrymander the vote by bringing in the largest property owner, Maysrich, into the voting block. But by doing this, this comes with a cost. It creates a great deal of bad faith with the downtown property owners and the merchants. And is this basically what the city needs right now? Pretty much a downtown version of the DDC fight for the next two years? I hope that the council makes the right decisions on how to proceed in order to improve downtown. I have confidence that you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pejman. Next is Marilyn Atkinson.
Marilyn Atkinson, President of the Old Town Scottsdale Property Owners and Merchants Association. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Old Town Association. We are strongly opposed to and will not support a Business Improvement District for improvements on city-owned property. Retail sales tax are what made this city operate, and a large portion of those tax dollars come from downtown. Why should small businesses and property owners be assessed for city marketing and improvements on city-owned property, which includes infrastructures, streetlight costs, and daily maintenance? The Scottsdale 2.0 consultant report also included an option for parking fees, revolving loan fund, isn't that something, revolving loan fund? Restaurant food and beverage tax, along with three types of Business Improvement Districts. The creation of this proposed assessment district, which will tax property owners and the tax will be assessed through, will be passed through to business owners and create substantial financial hardship on small property and business owners who are already burdened with taxes. Furthermore, installing paid parking meters in downtown will cause a major flight of our visitors away from downtown and into other shopping malls that offer free parking. Once a state-tax business statute district is selected, the expansion of assessed increased funding can be changed year by year, depending on the mayor or council in the office at the time. Because most state statutes are loaded with pitfalls, they could harm small businesses and property owners with an ever-increasing year-after-year tax burden. We are requesting the Business Improvement District concept be abandoned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson. Next is Richard Haslip.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Richard Haslip. I am a 42-year resident of Scottsdale, not quite as long as previous speaker, but I've been here a while. And I was appointed to the task force, the Tourism Advisory Task Force, a little over four years ago. And this study, this downtown 2.0, was an essential part of our agenda from the very beginning. It was, downtown was identified as an opportunity to enhance our tourism profile, and so we focused on that. And this study, performed by CSL International, I think, is a reflection of a lot of hard work that was focused on issues that were identified during the strategic planning process. The one thing, one of the things I liked about the study was the extent of the research that was done. Mr. Kotz and his staff, who you'll hear from tonight in probably more detail on this subject, had some 60 in-market interviews with local people. They had four or five working focus groups with gallery associations and other merchant associations in the downtown area. And we had five town hall meetings, which were essentially standing room only, as I recall. So there was a lot of local input. Additionally, we, it's one thing to judge ourselves, but we also did research on how we were perceived by others. There was a survey done of some 50 travel writers who talked about destinations in their articles, and we wanted to get their sense of how Scottsdale is perceived. One of the things we found was, and just let me also add, that we relied, CSL relied very heavily on work that had already been done. We didn't go out and reinvent the wheel. We looked closely at work that had been done by experienced Scottsdale, by the city of Scottsdale, and by others. So that was, I think, an element that lent it to the efficiency of the research. What they found was that there are some weaknesses and there are some strengths. Among the weaknesses were connectivity, connecting, for example, this beautiful facility here and the green space outside with Main Street and the gallery district and with Fashion Square and even with the entertainment district. So that kind of connectivity and walkability were important elements that dictated many of the recommendations that we made. The fun part for the task force was making the recommendations. The hard part was figuring out how the heck we're going to pay for it and how we're going to organize to keep it moving. And they have given us some ideas. You've heard a reaction to some of those ideas already this evening, and there'll be others presented. Organizationally, we're not going to go out and create a huge bureaucracy that's going to be managing downtown. We're going to rely on existing entities like Scottsdale Arts, which I'm also involved in, to implement a number of the recommendations related to public art and enhancing Scottsdale's already great reputation as an art destination. So I think I'm out of time, but I would be remiss if I didn't, since the city manager is here, acknowledge the support we got from city staff, Karen and her crew, but also I wanted to mention Paul Basia participated with us, as did Mary Bessler, Aaron Perrault, and Danielle Casey was very much involved and led by Brent Stockwell. So none of them asked me to say that, city manager, so, but I do want you to know that they were very helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Haslip. Next and finally is French Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Lane, Vice Mayor Cordy. My name is French Thompson. I own a gallery on Main Street in downtown Scottsdale. And I'd like to say that there was an awful lot of work that was put into that study. And when there's an awful lot of smart people in the room, you get a lot of really good ideas. One of the things you have to do, though, is you have to look at all those good ideas and decide which ones are better and which ones aren't. So I've read the report, and I think that there's some really good ideas. Connectivity was a really good idea, I like that, bringing more people in that area. I think there were some ideas that weren't all that good. They're talking about paid parking. I think that's a discrimination against the downtown merchants. Just as an example, Cherry Creek overbuilt all of their residential around the Cherry Creek Mall. All the residents started parking in the Cherry Creek Mall parking lot. Cherry Creek Mall now has to charge parking fees for all their customers to even park in this free lot that's now surrounded by residential. So that didn't really work that good to bring in more residential around the Cherry Creek area. It actually backfired on them. And the merchants now that are in Cherry Creek Mall are saying their businesses down because now they have to pay for parking and people won't shop there because all the other malls are free. You know, I love this downtown. I mean, I entrust my, the future of the city with this city council. You have the power to be able to improve things or have things go awry. And I'd just like to say that we have an amazing arts district already, and so in this recommendation to bring in somebody from out of state and supplement them and their income, the theory is we're going to bring in a really well-known artist and that's going to help our downtown. Well, if that's a really good artist, already well-known, why do we have to pay him to be here? I mean, that's kind of a crazy thing. Why would you supplement their living if they're already famous and making a good living? It just doesn't make sense. We've got an amazing art district where it is. With this arts district, if you had that $2 million, I'd say, why don't you just promote what we have here already instead of bring somebody else in and supplement them? We've got an amazing, world-famous arts district. I'd be taking that same money and trying to promote what we have. You've got an amazing city here. You've got an amazing downtown. You've got galleries that have survived the downturn. I mean, these people are survivors that are here. I think you should, you know, try to promote those people that are survivors and not bring in other businesses and try to make loans to them at a really low rate and say, hey, we're going to give you low rent, you know, low interest rates and subsidize you, while we don't do that for the existing people that are already here. So I just would like to ask you to try to really help our downtown and take some of those really smart ideas that aren't the best and kind of just push those aside and take the really good ideas and go forward with those. And thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. That does complete the public comment at this point in time, so pardon for the false start, but I will ask that Karen Churchard come back forward, which she has already dutifully done. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm going to give you an overview of our Tourism Strategic Plan, and then following that, we'll dive into the feasibility study. So the Tourism Strategic Plan was adopted by council in 2013, and also with that, the council created the Tourism Advisory Task Force group that actually worked with staff to help implement some of the concepts and components of the plan. There were seven different components, and they ranged from implementing an urban downtown experience to developing programs that appeal to multi-generational visitors to develop enhanced transportation programs. And in its last year, I'm going to review some of the key Tourism Advisory Task Force accomplishments and give you their final recommendations. The largest project of the plan is the Tourism-Related Downtown Economic Feasibility Study, which we will review following this review. Another component was the branding and marketing and advertising of our downtown. That has been, that's in the process right now, and we will continue to keep you apprised of that. We've done a lot of enhancements in the downtown area through the Tourism Task Force decor. We've just recently put up banners through all of our district neighborhoods. We just finally completed our Festoon lighting project. We replaced all the old lights and put up new ones. And the connectivity that you heard of a little bit about. The Tourism Advisory Task Force actually came up with a concept, and they titled it, just as a working title, Arizona Central. But the concept was that at the Arizona Canal Banks, there would be a place that you could go and gather all kinds of information and learn about our state of Arizona. And so that, with that in mind, and with the Civic Center Mall, which I'll mention briefly, this whole concept of connectivity came up. And how do you connect, how can you connect better from the canal banks all the way to our beautiful mall? So with that, we started working on putting in capital improvement projects, and thank you for adopting the Marshall Way project that was just completed. Street looks very good, and we are looking forward to another project that you all approved, which is the Main Street enhancement. We'll start design elements this fiscal year, and we're looking at construction the following fiscal year. So this connectivity project, really, as I mentioned, was the Cal Banks, but highlighting the Civic Center Mall. And as part of the Tourism Advisory Task Force, they recommended to the Development Commission and the council to use that tax funds to pay for the Civic Center Municipal Use Master Site Plan. So that is in progress right now as well. Another component was special events. The special events ordinance came, that concept came through the Tourism Strategic Plan, and we hired a company, Web, to really look at our special events and really give us a lot of great data and information that the staff can use to support and actually create events. And one of the concepts was that we should, we wanted to create some big destination events. And during this process of a few years of conversations, we realized that we have that event, Canal Convergence. And again, thank you to the commission and to the council, primarily for supporting that concept of taking Canal Convergence to the next level. After its four-day completion this February/March weekends, excuse me, we will be moving that event to November of 2018 and expanding it to a 10-day event. Promotions in our downtown area and events, we've heard about Scottsdale earlier, but we're just trying to create different online opportunities to promote downtown. Western Week, we're bringing back that component. And we worked with the San Francisco Giants and the Scottsdale Charles to promote spring training. Temporary art installations are a big part of what we'd like to see, the task force would like to see, and we support that. Another area that we felt we needed a lot more information on our visitors, and so we did a research project with Longwoods International, which the funding in our budget continues to support that. Very important information for both the city of Scottsdale and Experian Scottsdale. Activation, seasonal entertainment and activation came out of the Tourism Advisory Task Force, and we've been doing that for the past four years and continue this fifth year. And finally, transportation. A big part of the project was really looking at biking routes and even bike share, and we're really thrilled that we have our first route up. We have done some artistic-type shapes of shaping our mountain vistas, and Bike Share is just kicking off, I think tomorrow we have an announcement on that. The last piece that has been in discussion, and we are just now coming up with some conceptional ideas that we're going to be presenting to the Tourism Development Commission, and if successful, we'll be back to council, is connectivity of Sky Harbor Airport to our city of Scottsdale. So you'll hear more about that as well. So our, the final recommendations from the Tourism Advisory Task Force in its four-and-a-half years is to continue all those programs that I just reviewed, including the opportunity for Sky Harbor connectivity. So with that, I'd like to talk a little bit about the downtown feasibility study and give Brian a minute to change up our PowerPoint presentation with my many thanks. So, we, I just talked a little bit about the Tourism Strategic Plan, so as you just heard, downtown Scottsdale is a major component of that, of that plan, and it plays, the downtown plays a really critical role in the city's tourism industry, and it's also a leading center of business and commerce in Scottsdale. And so with a lot of ambitious visions from various groups for downtown, scope of work and deliverables for this study was developed through a collaboration of the downtown working group, which was part of the task force, the city's economic development, planning, transportation, and tourism events departments, and Experian Scottsdale. We went through a competitive bid process that followed to really make sure that we hired a highly qualified firm. And tonight, that awardee, the city's consultant, CSL, and staff were bringing forward 18 months of a lot of research and public output in the reach, as you just heard, that will focus on, with the idea of focusing on our economics performance and creating a highly desirable and vibrant downtown. So with that, I want to present, to present an overview, welcome John Kotz, the Principal of CSL International. He'll give a pretty robust little presentation, and Mayor, I'll leave it to you all if you want to ask questions through his presentation or wait until the end, whatever your desire. And several city staff people will be sitting right here on staff row to answer questions as well. And following his presentation, we'd like to give you a few staff recommendations. So with that, John Kotz.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen, and thank you, John. As far as the council and their questions are concerned, if they come up and they're pertinent to a specific element and you'd like to ask a question at this point in time, we'd like to have a good flow through this conversation, but if it's an important thing to point out from the council, let's go ahead and entertain them as we go along, if that's all right with you two.
I would actually entertain that. I've got probably 200 pages of research to go through in 20 minutes. I can't talk that fast, so if you can't interrupt me once in a while, I think it would actually help the flow perhaps, so. Mayor, council members, thank you very much. As Karen mentioned, how do I turn this, how do I move this thing?
You know, your remote is this here, I'm sorry. I'll show you that. It's right here.
Oh, my goodness.
You're okay?
Right here, okay, got it, okay. I'm a little higher tech than this. I'm a little higher tech than this, I apologize. My gosh, it's a keyboard for credit alone. Karen covered this slide, so I won't spend a lot of time. The point of this exercise is to recognize that the tourism industry is a massive economic impact generator, not just for Scottsdale or downtown Scottsdale, but for many communities across the country. And spending time thinking about that industry and considering investments to continue to grow that industry makes a lot of sense. And particularly in Scottsdale, given the importance of the tourism industry to the overall economy. So we kind of started there. Dick covered this slide, so I don't have to cover this either. So I'm doing pretty good, two for two, and I've got somebody covering for me. A lot of research went into this process. We met individually with all of you. We talked to stakeholders throughout the community, merchant groups. As Dick mentioned, we went outside the community to understand the opinions of people who are outside the market that have direct insight into the tourism industry to get their views, walking tours, downtown merchant association, town halls, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This has been an amazing process, more so than any project I think I've ever been involved with. I can sit here and look out in the audience and it's like, I know these guys, we've worked together. So it's been a great process and I appreciate the comments from those in the audience previously as well. So creating this platform of research and insight allows us to start dipping our toe into what we think might make sense in terms of investment to support the visitor industry. One of the things that we understand when you look around the country is that economic development is kind of a three-legged stool. It is tourists, we love tourists, they come and they spend a lot of money and they leave. But you can't do it with one leg. You also need residents and you need office workers in any vibrant destination to create that 24/7 community that visitors are excited to go visit. So we started looking at the commercial development and residential development from a variety of perspectives. We know there's a little over 4,000 residents today. And with the projects that are already under construction, you're probably going to get to 6,100 residents by 2020. We also took a look at the resident population on a per-square-mile basis, measuring it against Tempe and Santa Fe and La Jolla and other markets that are kind of similar. And looking at these metrics, we would say 8,200 population would be an appropriate target for 2025. Given the fact that you're already at 6,100, getting to 8,200 doesn't seem to us to be a substantial stretch. And again, strictly from the visitor industry, I value residents because they are supporting the restaurants and the retail and the entertainment that the visitors are looking for. They're creating a unique, real destination as opposed to something that's manufactured. So we think that's a positive step. We also think, looking at the Maricopa Association of Governments, their statistics show over 11,000 downtown residents by 2040. Given the trajectory of where we're at with the development, we think we could advance that. Maybe not 11,000, but 10,000 by 2030 would be an appropriate target. At 10,000, a lot of research tells us that you've started to create a real destination. You've created this 24/7 living, breathing environment that can support the existing retail and restaurants. Right now, we're underpopulated relative to our restaurant retail base. So these types of projects will help support everybody from the galleries to the unique retail, to the restaurants, et cetera. And as I say, visitors are drawn to that unique and authentic neighborhood experience. And lastly, as you go forward and invest in these projects, or developers invest in these projects and you permit them and the like, there is a Scottsdale mystique, there is a quality level that has to be maintained. We're not in the business of building anybody's housing. This has got to be the kind of housing that I think reflects the brand of the destination. There can be affordable elements to it certainly, but by and large, we need to make sure we're maintaining quality standards. We also looked at office recruitment. We have challenges in downtown Scottsdale. There aren't a lot of developable pieces of land, but there are a lot of 3,000, 5,000 square-foot buildings or footprints that we think you could bring in a lot of creative class office tenants, boutique law firms, design firms, studio space, architects, planners, et cetera. And these types of businesses we're seeing in Grand Rapids, for example, where they have major corporations outside of downtown, their tech or their marketing department may move to a downtown location, even though the campus is somewhere else. So imagine a big Wells Fargo and Chandler opening up a marketing or a tech office in downtown Scottsdale because there's vibrancy and they want to employ those younger workers. And having a downtown environment really speaks to that. And there's, I think, a number of opportunities to bring in that kind of tenant that again, supports the restaurants, retail and creates the vibrancy that we're looking for. Beyond that, again, looking at.
Excuse me, John, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
This is, I don't want to spend too much time on maybe some of this kind of interruption, but when we talk about focusing on the, a specific type of clientele or what we call a creative class recruitment, are we talking about building the environment? Because through years of trying to do exactly that, I mean, we really have just created what those companies that would bring that kind of environment, now I am focusing on companies, but nevertheless would bring them to an environment that meets their needs. So is that what we're talking about? Because obviously, we don't own all the property and we can't set all of the criteria.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. So some of what you're doing is right on target, the Bike Share concepts that you've talked about and the vibrancy with the events that you're talking about. Create a destination where these employees want to live and work. The other thing we see communities do is they'll employ a toolkit. Marilyn mentioned the revolving loan fund or a facade improvement program or assistance with permitting or those kinds of tools that are not necessarily high-dollar tools in addition to marketing. But there are things that a community often does to try to lure these businesses into downtown. And oftentimes, you've got to go find them and market to them to bring them in.
But specifically, you're not talking about subsidizing to bring that type of business?
No, unless you consider revolving loan fund a subsidy. I personally don't, it's paid back. But those kind of elements are low-dollar investments that can pay for themselves. Yeah, you wouldn't go out and say, we've got a $10 million check to bring a company downtown. We're not all about that. I don't think you need to do that. Frankly, you're Scottsdale and there's some cachet there that you can.
I just wondered if that's what was being.
No, not at all, not at all. And even with some of these larger footprints, 630,000 square feet of commercial office space could be developed over the long term. It's about a 15% to 20% increase in your current capacity. If you had that kind of workforce in downtown, going to the restaurants, going to the galleries, again, it creates that synergy and on a per-square-mile basis, looking at again, some of your competitive markets, that 630 is about right. Imagine if we had two parcels where you could do, say, 200,000 square-foot office development. Not a headquarters, but a large impactful footprint. There's a variety of locations around downtown. You'd end up with 400,000 square feet of office space just in that alone. So again, this target where we think you should be in terms of commercial office space at 630,000 square feet makes sense, not in and of itself, but because we've created that better destination that the visitors are going to respond to. Okay, moving on, public spaces. Karen mentioned public space is very important and we absolutely agree. There's a number of areas around the community that have been discussed. Holly Street has been working heavily on the Civic Center Mall. We're talking about greater event spaces, public spaces, connectivity, bike spaces, public art. We endorse that and we suggest you continue to move aggressively through that. Next, Loma, probably the largest parcel that you own downtown, and we take that very seriously. There are opportunities to develop great green space, but as you can see in the map, it's a little bit off in the corner. It's not a centrally-located event green space. Conversely, there are opportunities to develop commercial space and we like that in the sense that it creates tax revenue, a tax base that generates hundreds of thousands of dollars that can be used for other projects. So the trick for us is to create that right balance, commercial development while maintaining green space. In addition to Holly Street, we work with a company called Populous to develop very conceptual models, but it might look something like this where you've got some element of parking and commercial. In addition to a fantastic green space spine there that moves from Museum of the West all the way south, helping to activate all the investment that you've already made. We put a lot of money in the Museum of the West and this helps activate that area of town. So we like that striking a balance between commercial and green space. And plans like this, I think, do it and I would strongly suggest we move forward, you move forward in this type of development. Now moving a little bit north up to the canal. Canal is an amazing asset, an amazing opportunity. One of the things we've done in working with Holly Street and Populous and the community at large is to say, we have to protect that, that's valuable. What are the guiding principles that we need to respect as we go forth and look at what that future might be? Certainly, somebody mentioned protecting the quality and the character of the assets that exist to the degree we can is very important. But also creating public space in interior and exterior and community gathering areas, pedestrian linkages, something that's an asset for both visitors and residents, significant public art and robust amenities for bike and other types of transportation. So these are the things we're trying to achieve as we consider private investment with potentially public encouragement along the canal. I'm going to start over by what used to be known as Arizona Central, kind of Marshall and Fifth, as you see there. And there's a couple of concepts. Holly Street has developed kind of a portal concept where it's heavier commercial development, which is great, creates tax benefit. Another solution might be something Populous was kicking around and that is more public space. So you kind of opened up the canal and created these great pavilions that I think would be an asset again for residents and visitors. Moving a little bit towards the Scottsdale Road, we've got Marshall Way Bridge you can see there and some of the discussion that's taken place in the community involves a type of public market, indoor/outdoor space, farmer's market, classes for the community, farmers, as I say, farmer's market. So just a really active, exciting space for, again, community and residents located just off Marshall Way Bridge. And then moving over to Scottsdale Road, right now, as you drive past Lari Bridge, you're all familiar with UPS and some other businesses. It's not the kind of ambiance that you're going to want to introduce to your visitors. As you drive down Scottsdale Road, you know, you think of it as this grand boulevard. There are some areas that don't scream Scottsdale and that's one of them. So what if we invested in that and created a structure that could look like this? This is a Populous rendering where they've got structured parking, hotel, restaurant, residential, perhaps a large digital screen for movies in the plaza, et cetera. So if you were to achieve even some element of this development along the canal, our analysis suggests that you are transforming enough to drive fairly material increases in overall visitation to the community. And as you say, Mayor, it ain't a public investment, this is private sector investment. We may want to employ a toolkit, but relative to the private investment, it's insignificant. Moving south, public space, Civic Center and Stadium. Again, Holly Street focused heavily on Civic Center Mall. They actually went down to Second Street and suggested we open Second Street, which I love. Continuing that further south, you've got the Second Street Garage, which is in a poor state of condition, should be probably torn down. If that were to happen, you could reconstruct the parking and create liner buildings. You see the little buildings there in the front of the parking structure. You could also develop space over the air rights of the parking garage. If we're looking to develop a larger commercial space, that could be a potential location. And that pedestrian experience continues all the way to the stadium where perhaps there's more retail, restaurants, team store access into the stadium. So imagine you're coming from Main Street, you access Civic Center Mall, you head south and you're walking past the beautiful Civic Center area across Second, past more retail and into the stadium. A wonderful linkage of assets that the visitor industry would respond very, very well to. I mentioned briefly Scottsdale Road. I'm not enamored by the condition in many areas. There's some element of median, there's some plantings, but it isn't what I call visitor-friendly. And what we'd like to see is this, again, balance between robust traffic, because it is a thoroughfare and that's not going to change, and better pedestrian condition. So widen the sidewalks, create shade structures. Perhaps the shade structures can be part of your public art component. If we do that, you're looking at just a couple of examples you can hear in Palm Desert, in Palm Springs area. You can see El Paso and the bottom picture, I mean, this is not a, this is not a, you know, stark little street. This is a heavy-trafficked boulevard. We can maintain that, but notice the median in the middle. And some of the things they've been able to do to create the true boulevard that Scottsdale Road really should be as a visitor industry asset. You see Los Alamos Boulevard and Fort Lauderdale, same kind of thing. We've developed some preliminary estimates of the investment. We're working with Populous and continuing that. But I think that's, that might be an area of public investment that should be considered that could leverage additional private investment along the boulevard. Those are the three areas there, again, the canal, Scottsdale Road and Civic Center Mall that we think create this fantastic palette of public spaces that you should be investing in. Moving forward, leveraging the brand, refocusing the art sector approach. Galleries are great, you have to some degree an internationally-known brand in the arts. I think even the galleries would agree that it's, we'll call it stabilized. It isn't moving up, it isn't trending in the direction we'd like, galleries are moving out, customers are harder to come by. And we need to fix that. So how do we create what I'll call this, the buzz or the product? That if we're going to spend more money on marketing, that's great, but what are we selling? How do we create this product? So let's talk about that. One of the things we think would be a good investment, again, a public sector pocket park investment, maybe 10 to 12 spaces in the downtown area that would have seating, shade, music, wayfinding, kiosks, maybe a Bike Share element to it. And if you populate the downtown in strategic locations, First, Second, Main, Marshall Way, other areas, you've created linkages for pedestrians to move throughout the downtown and they can see the next, they can see the connectivity from a green perspective throughout the entire downtown area. These are not big investments, but I think they can be very impactful. If you're asking a visitor to literally walk from Fashion Square Mall down to Main Street, you know, that's a tough walk. And the way the landscape is today, it's not as inviting as it could be. So these, a small investment in these pocket parks, I think, makes a lot of sense. Here's an example, Main and Marshall, you can see the inset is the current condition. And our Populous team has kind of come up with a couple of pretty little renderings. Again, there's another one, Marshall Road Park Concept with a small investment. These are not huge expenditures. Continuing that theme along Main Street, I love the fact that you're spending a couple million dollars on enhancements today. That's right on target and it's, as merchants know, it is sorely needed, so well done on that. And I think you can continue to even go further. There's just a small rendering there of these shade structures. Again, a public art component that creates shade actually crossing Main Street. I'm not going to hang my hat on this. This is simply a suggestion of the kind of thing that you can do to take the $2 or $3 million investment and continue to move forward, making Main Street a really grand place for a visitor experience. Monumental art, I love this notion of having something that is a signature feature. You can see the big blue bear in Denver is, you know, if you go to their Bureau website, that's the thing. You know, that is their icon. You go to Minneapolis's website, the Spoonbridge and Sherry is the thing. So there are, you have a little bit of it with Jackknife and a couple other things, but nothing that's that grand, but actually could have a kinetic component. France Kafka and Prague, actually, those pieces actually move depending on time of day to create a different look with the sun. So having something that's monumental, almost a call to action and kinetic even, in one or two spots, we see as potentially impactful. Also, continuing that art theme and art trail, imagine 10 to 20 pieces every year they rotate. They're curated, they're selected by a committee, they populate a particular passageway. This, I've just isolated Marshall Way, doesn't have to be. This could be tied, for example, to Canal Convergence where the announcement is made during the event and these sculptures are unveiled. The ones that don't make it are for sale. In many communities, they take the profits from that and they put it into downtown marketing. So having some theme like this, I think, would be positive. And again, relatively inexpensive. Developing new and expanded festivals. At the outset, we believed that a large, single, 10-day-type festival would be a fantastic idea for Scottsdale. We were kicking around this notion of West Fest that would take art, history, education, culinary, equine, all the elements that might define the brand and create an event around that. I think you kind of got there with the Canal Convergence. I think what you're doing there is the big thing. Once that's stable and just doing fantastic, you may consider a bookend event to drive visitation. But that big event, I think, you're doing pretty well with. And then I would add a number of shoulder-season festivals. The plein air painting competition in Maryland, they sold 350 paintings in a weekend. The profits, again, going to marketing the downtown. In Naples, they've got the Ferrari Club event. 30,000 to 40,000 people come downtown Naples, Fifth Avenue Ferrari Club every year to see the cars and spend money in the shops and restaurants. In Palm Springs, they've got the Health and Wellness Festival. This is an opportunity to partner with Honor Health, Mayo Clinic, ASU, to create a, you know, a health-oriented festival based in Scottsdale. Again, not the big thing, but if it's in the need period where we need room nights, sure, we'll do that. And this is not an expensive play. Leverage the brand, refocus the art sector approach. Again, this is more towards that, how do we create that product and re-energize the arts brand so that whoever's selling this thing can get some traction? And I hang my hat on none of these, these are suggestions. One of them that's in Cherry Creek North is the Grapes and Galleries Festival. They partner with the hotels, the restaurants, the galleries to create this. They partner with the hotels, the restaurants, the galleries, to create this synergy where, imagine, a visitor coming to Scottsdale now has an itinerary on the website that has one of the unique hotels in downtown. I go to Art Walk on Thursday, I go to the Urban Wine Bar Trail that exists and will create throughout downtown. I could take in an event at the Performing Arts Center, I could go to Museum of the West. The next day, I could go shopping, galleries, retail. That evening, I could take one of the bikes, and guess what? Some of the most amazing outdoor space in the world is within, what, a mile of downtown Scottsdale. So I could access these trails, go to Camelback Mountain, come back, have an evening yoga session, and the next morning, I fly out. I mean, we can create these itineraries if we start thinking about how to put all these pieces together. We need to do more of that. Cross-promotion, we've got 600,000 people showing up for the Phoenix Open. We've got Prodded Del Sol, we've got the Arabian Horse Show. These are folks that have a lot of money, and we think we can do more in partnering with them to say, you know, if you're coming, spend some money downtown. Targeting complementary businesses, Bob mentioned that, that's done in markets across the country. There's sensitivity to that, but I think if we can create a district that we can say is precious enough, or we need to make sure we're getting the right kind of businesses, that's something that should be looked at. The jury to event for emerging artists, again, I'm tempted just to cross that off. I think I'd, you guys would probably applaud if I did, I would think. But the concept, just to be clear, is not bringing in established artists from around the world. It's if we had a young set of emerging artists that were creating a reputation, if you brought them to Scottsdale for a period of time that could be as short as a couple of months. If I'm marketing it, I'd go out there and I'd say, "Look, we've got these really cool artists from, you know, they're apprenticing with the experts here," however you want to phrase it, I don't care, but it'd be something I could sell to the visitor community. And then more resources. You know, we think we need, you know, $400,000 or $500,000 of marketing for downtown, and you don't have that. Those of you in business, if you've worked for a company that creates a product, and you've got a great product, and then the CEO goes to the marketing department and says, "You know, I'm going to give you a couple hundred thousand. Here's 150,000. Go market our amazing product." The CEO should be fired. You need to spend the appropriate amount of money on marketing this destination to folks in the valley to come and spend their money. And then, you know, various arts and music programming, we think, throughout the destination. If we did all of these things, and again, cross two out, add three more, I don't care, but if we work to create a more buzz, more product, I think you can increase visitation and break this cycle that you absolutely are in of, I don't want to call it stagnation, but you're not going, you know, it's not tilting up yet. We need to fix that. Let's see. New hotel and conference center, the largest sellable footprint contiguous space in downtown Scottsdale is 4,000 square feet. We'd like to see that closer to 20, 25,000 square feet. And the payoff for the community is now we're bringing in events that are using 1, 2, 3, 4 hotels. These are larger conferences, national and international, that spend a lot of money. This is a public-private partnership opportunity. We see mostly private sector, but there are cases where the public sector may step in. Let's just imagine developer builds this, but you, the city, are granted 30 days a year complimentary for community events. There's a compensation for that. So we could create some sort of partnership, but I think the market's ripe for this type of project in the downtown area to bring in the kind of events that you're just not getting today. We've talked to the Convention Bureau and other hotels, I think they're all in agreement with that as well. Downtown management, organizational structures, kind of in the home stretch here, so as we work with the community and work with the various city departments, we know there's tourism, and I'm going to forget some, planning, economic development, transportation, public works, parks and rec, police, fire, there's the Salt River Project, there's the Merchant Association, there's all kinds of entities that impact downtown, but there's no one real quarterback to say, "How do we move downtown forward?" And certainly not one that's resourced the way it should be. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Katz, if I might, you know, just dropping back to the previous slide, if you don't mind, just for a quick second. The concern I have about this is, and I realize you're talking about a P3 on this, but nevertheless, it still ends up with a, the city being involved in competition with existing facilities here in town, across our town. And there's a certain amount of sensitivity to that. How would you, downtown may be in competition with them, but also for us to make a determination that not just anecdotally, but the marketplace generally plays these things out well, if there was really a market for it that was survivable. As we look to Phoenix and see what, you know, what they've just gone through with somewhat of a debacle of a loss on that with their hotel and that arrangement, it just seems how would you sort of justify that the city would now put out an RFP which undoubtedly would involve the city's involvement and thus, and I'm using this word maybe a little out of context, but by subsidizing it somehow or other in participation or land or otherwise with our existing? I'm not convinced, but how would you address that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So a next step, not the next step, but a next step, could be the issuance of some sort of request for interest, letters of interest or qualifications, not necessarily a full proposal. And what you might suggest in that request would be you, developer, we, the city, are interested in having this kind of asset in our community. We have certain tools in our toolkit, permitting, whatever it might be, the support of council. You, developer, tell us what you would need from a public standpoint, if anything, to realize the development of a product that we've described to you. My suspicion is you would get back, because of the rate and occupancy in this market, a number of proposals or at least interest from developers that had next to no public involvement. Maybe a little bit, but the only little bit it would be would be, you know, I can build a 300-room hotel with 15,000 square feet of space. As a consultant, I would come back to you and say, "That's okay for that hotel, but if you want that asset to benefit the entire downtown, it needs to be 20, 25,000 square feet." And in order to get there, maybe there's some sort of, you know, who knows, some public participation that is minimal, if any, to secure that asset. I would not suggest we go in there saying, you know, "We've got $10 million, we're going to subsid." This is not that kind of project. Some markets, if you're in Chandler, not to pick in other markets, they may have to do that, but given the rate and occupancy in Scottsdale, I think you don't have to do that.
And I appreciate that answer, and even though it would all sort of come out in the wash once you issue a letter of interest, or if someone has an interest, because the callback out is when the city has an interest, that somehow or other, they're going to ante up somehow or other. I mean, it's just the way it plays out. And the other is for existing property owners right now that have hotels or otherwise in the works, whether this doesn't thwart their development in favor of something that may be on a special note for the city. But just my point, but I appreciate your answer.
Very good points. Absolutely good points. Again, downtown structure.
Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry, John. I've got one other question.
The mayor brings up something that's concerning to me about this. How much discussion did you have about potential hotels that might be coming with any of the research that you did? Because we have approved some already, and there are some being contemplated, and, you know, how much of work did you look at, what's actually happening right now that's not being asked for by the city of Scottsdale, but it's private development coming to us?
Yeah, we're aware of some of the projects that you're in discussion with. None of them would necessarily meet the standards of a hotel conference center for the community. I guess if I were in your shoes, part of my next step would be to establish whether or not the existence of this asset in downtown would be beneficial in terms of bringing in new visitors. Is it something we'd want under any circumstance? If the answer is yes, then I think working with the development community that you're already talking with to see if this is a possibility and/or an RFQ process would be an appropriate next step. If the RFQ process came back and said, "We want a substantial city investment," you can truncate the project and you're done. But, you know, I would, it's this whole notion of, is this an asset that we can, we think can be impactful? We do, and to try to achieve it as best you can. And perhaps you're working with the existing developers to do it.
How many square feet of banquet space or conference room space is available now? There's a lot of hotels that have, you know, I can think of several that are nearby. Embassy Suites is a good example, has conference rooms. How much square footage of conference room space is available right now among the hotels that are in the downtown area?
Yeah, one of the ways we measure it is their largest contiguous space. And the largest contiguous space is 4,000, and we're talking probably 20, 25,000 square feet of this large contiguous space. The contiguous space is critical, so if you're doing a banquet, a reception, or poster session, or exhibits, whatever it might be, you need that large room, and it doesn't exist in downtown.
Thank you.
Again, organizational structures, multiple entities contributing to the discussion of what downtown is, no quarterback, not enough resources. So what we've suggested is the creation of a not-for-profit Downtown Scottsdale, Inc. sort of corporation, whose responsibilities would include coordinating downtown maintenance, marketing downtown to residents and visitors, fundraising and support for downtown developments, marketing and merchandising assistance, assist with business attraction, building owner/tenant relationships, event production. And as a component of that, imagine this Downtown Scottsdale, Inc. structure, a component that could be a revitalization district and a public foundation. So the structure might look something like this. You'd have the city of Scottsdale and the destination stakeholders would populate a board of directors. I understand 20 years ago you had some challenges, and I think we can reinvent this notion, and the board of directors would have people like the CFO of Honor Health, chief marketing officer of a major corporation, would have members of the merchant associations, perhaps council representation. This is a, Cherry Creek North does it this way, and they have a very substantial board of directors with substantial community and stakeholder input to guide Downtown Scottsdale, Inc., and they would in turn work with the various city departments. I like that solution as opposed to a city department. I think this gives the stakeholders more input in how you do this. The notion of the revitalization district, or a bid, as it's been called, is incredibly common throughout the country. This is a notion of asking the tenants and the building owners in the area to pitch in for marketing improvements, events, festivals, those kinds of things. But it's just one source of revenue. We'll talk about other sources of revenue, it's just one concept that could be considered, as could the foundation. Challenge with the foundation is I can't budget five years from now for what my foundation's going to generate, but I think it's a useful tool for arts programming, or monumental art, or land acquisition, or whatever it might be that that could plug into. So again, this Downtown Scottsdale, Inc. and the revitalization district would design to build consensus with downtown stakeholders, have clearly defined mission, defined goals and tactics and strategies to achieve these goals, robust stakeholder input in all decisions, and then annual reporting and accountability. This is a business. This is not, you know, kind of a plaything for entities. This is a real business and has to be run as such, and I think if you do it that way, you can create the accountability mechanisms that would benefit the stakeholders. The other element of the foundation, as I mentioned, improve the quality of life in downtown by connecting local donors to the needs of the downtown economy, allow for contributions from individuals and other foundations, and then you can tie that to specific initiatives. So that would be, as I put it all back on the screen, that would be the entity that would be the quarterback for downtown. We think their budget probably should be in the range of about $3.5 million. You're a couple million short. You can raise those funds from a variety of ways. The district assessment notion we talked about, again, Cherry Creek North generates $3-plus million a year from their assessments, and it's very effective. The downtown organization could earn income through events, through sponsorships, advertising. Oklahoma City is absolutely famous. It's one of the most conservative states and the most conservative cities in the world, and it's famous for their local option sales tax, where for a period of five or seven years, the voters approve a 1% increase, and they generated over $700 million for public investment. I think here, I did some math, a half percent sales tax increase is $50 million a year here. So if you did that for five years and blinked off, you'd generate 250 to 300 million for community projects. Prepared food and beverage tax is one that you see used all across the country. It could be just a downtown tax, or it could be tax on restaurants that avoid fast food. Parking revenue, again, it's not uncommon across the country. Again, it's, we're not falling on a sword in any of this, it's just an option. It could be materialized in a variety of ways. It could be, you know, a valet operation, it could be selling permits to store owners for their employees in certain lots, so you're getting your employees off the front of your store and moving them to certain lots, and you guys pay a little bit for that. Variety of ways to do it. It's something that we think should be considered, and if discarded, that's fine as well. City budget allocation, if you were to reallocate some of your budget. Public Works is a $30, $3 million business, a department. If you took 10% of their budget and put it downtown, that's $3 million a year, that covers pretty much everything. City bond issue, you're fortunate to have a great credit rating, you could issue bonds. Tax increment allocations. Grand Rapids, Michigan generates $7 million a year in the downtown area for downtown investment. Downtown development fees, permits, those are all great, they're just not big revenue generators. So there are a number of ways that communities across the country invest in downtown management, marketing, improvement, and then destination asset building. This is a good summary of that list, and if we cross one off, it means we have to pick another one. One thing on the revitalization district, one way I look at that is, you know, parking is the third rail in many cases. If you go to the business owners, including the mall, and say, "We won't charge for parking, but you're going to have to kick into the revitalization district." Well, guess what? The mall's probably contributing over 50% of the total value of that revitalization district. So we're using the mall to create an asset to market the entire downtown. So there are a lot of ways to skin this cat, but again, that's your list, you know? If you don't want one, that's great, you're going to have to pick something else to go fund some of these investments.
Mr. Katz, I've got just an observation when we talk about these potential funding sources, and one of them that we already have in place, and it has been subject of quite a bit of discussion through the years, and that is, right now, the merchants do pay for parking through in lieu parking fees that are established. And there's about a half a million dollars in that, but some of it's been used even in part for the studies that have taken place here on some of these items here right now. And there's an accumulation each and every year from that fund, both from the sale of required parking, or I should say, the purchase of required parking for those businesses that don't have it on their premises for it. And the other is in the leasing of it. Well, I won't say, maybe it's a, it may be a payment over time, I'm not sure if it's a leasing or some kind of payment program on it. But in either case, has that been taken into consideration as any portion of or some adaptation of that program? Since right now, a merchant's to pay for it, there's not a meter on the sidewalk, but they do pay for it one way or the other. And we've built parking garages with that money.
Yeah, my understanding is that's kind of been the model. We'll take those payment-in-lieu, if you want to call it that, and we'll use that to build and maintain structured parking in other areas. So I'm not, I'll admit, I'm not sure what kind of incremental capacity may exist in that program to fund other assets. My guess is that you're probably using it all right now for some of the parking structures that you've built and you maintain. We can look at that.
Well, oftentimes, it's a partnership deal and a development agreement, and that's what has sort of providing for public parking in conjunction with a need for a property owner at some stage of it. So I just wanted to throw that out, because obviously, it is an issue that we already are in part, you know, having that source of income from parking right now.
One thing we all agree on is no meters. We don't want meters. That's not going to work.
Yeah, and it's, and there is another item that I don't know whether it was developed in the course of this study and conversation, but that is that there is a significant feeling in the overall development community, and this may be wishful, but it may be reality. I happen to believe that there is some substance to this. And that's with technology changes, with autonomous vehicles and smart vehicles, that there is going to be a lessening effect. I do understand, but it's more or less anecdotally, that this is already occurring in some cities across the country where they're seeing themselves, to some degree, already recognizing some over-parking situation. Some of their structures and buildings are over-parked.
Well, it's interesting. There are communities who are building parking structures with super-high ceiling heights, head heights, recognizing that parking structure may be useful for the next five years, but it's probably going to be an office building or residential in 10 years. So they're actually designing them for that.
Yeah, it's just one of those additional factors that happens in the marketplace, that we don't want to find ourselves on the bleeding edge of some kind of development. Thanks.
So that's it.
Oh, I didn't realize it coincided with your last slide, that question. So any questions from? So, any questions from any of the council members, even in summation? Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, an interesting study, and certainly you've been at it for a long time. You probably know the city as well as anyone. I want to begin by really extending my thanks or congratulations to staff for a lot of the things that are happening in the downtown. We, I think, have some momentum now, whether it's the Marshall Street redo, or the Main Street that's coming, or some of the special events that are truly destination events, and I think are enlivening downtown and creating this missing buzz that you referred to. So I think, again, to staff and to everybody involved, we're doing some good stuff, and let's keep up the momentum. Regarding this study, you have also identified, I think, a lot of intriguing things for us to think about. But I want to ask a question that is sort of fundamental to the whole study, and it is, what did you perceive to be the assignment? Before you answer, let me prejudice the answer that I'd like to hear by saying that our downtown area is, in a sense, a living museum. And I don't say that in any old and tired way. It is a collection of interesting places for people to visit. It always has been. And not only to visit, but to eat and to shop and whatever, but as a collection of properties, it's one of the most visited destinations in the city. And it may not be why anybody comes here, but it's most often what somebody does when they do come here. And so the problem that I want to see us trying to solve is how to enhance that cachet, that living museum, that visitation opportunity. You said somewhere in the report, Scottsdale brand is world-class. I agree with that. And that's something we have to protect. Dick Heslip, in his opening comments, said that your assignment and the assignment of the Tourism Advisory Task Force was to focus on tourism. And I see in here what you said as one of the concepts, was the investment concepts that you've identified are tied to enhancing hospitality and commercial density. And I'm not getting the connection between how we just solve the problems here by putting more people in more office buildings and frankly, more traffic congestion into this area. I'm not getting it.
Yeah, good question. So.
That was all one question.
Yeah, that's it. Good questions. So mission broadly described, I think you did it well. Increasing visitation, creating a better sense of place, maintaining the world-class brand of the destination. So we're getting more of the people that are coming downtown and spending money. That's a big question. And, you know, in a microcosm, we could say, hey, do another event. It's going to be great, you know? Or, you know, put up a statue, put up a monumental piece of art. Those individual things in a vacuum might be, you know, useful in increasing visitation. But when you start looking at downtown Scottsdale, it's 1.3 square miles. It is a big downtown, and it's incredibly diverse. And we came to the conclusion fairly quickly, looking at a variety of metrics, comparing yourself to other resort-type destinations, population per square mile, commercial space, et cetera, that we could sustain increases in those areas without harming the brand of the destination. I mean, it'll evolve a bit, but I mean, it's not, we're not harming what is central to it. And candidly, if we start going down a road where we're harming it, you may have to back off that. But I want the residential and the commercial because they support the real downtown, the restaurants and the retail and the entertainment. If you go to a destination, you want to see that kind of activity. You want to see, you know, a 24/7 type, or at least 27, type of environment that's active and energetic. And I can't give you that by saying, turn up the dial on visitors. It's, there's, if I own a business, if I go to these guys and say, hey, I'm going to bring you a few more visitors, is that going to allow you to, you know, open up a new business? Probably not. But if I say to you, I'm going to bring in more visitors, I'm going to have residents, they're going to shop at your stores and go to your restaurants, and I've got a really, you know, cool workforce, that three-legged stool helps build the destination. But I can sense what you're thinking. 600,000 square feet of space, 10,000 residents. You're envisioning a downtown Phoenix where we overwhelm the character of the market. And I don't think the levels we're talking about get you there. And I think I would work against harming the character of the destination. But I think there's capacity to do both.
Well, I obviously do question that, and I think it's a premise that we should not just state as a statement of fact without some anecdotal reference to its relevance to our asset, which is the downtown area. The communities that you cite as comparables and from which you derive a lot of the statistics, Cherry Creek North in Colorado. I don't know of anybody that goes to Cherry Creek on vacation. I don't know, frankly, anybody that goes to downtown Tempe on vacation. I don't know of anybody that goes to Walnut Creek. I don't know whether... The cities that seem most comparable to me that you've picked, there are really only two, and that's Santa Fe, New Mexico, and Laguna Beach. But you made the point that we have a very large and diverse area. And I'm not sure one size fits all for this area. Most of these other, no other area you looked at except for Pasadena was as large of a geographic footprint. Most of these, you were talking about a half a square mile or something.
Or less.
Or less than that. And I am concerned if we adopt as a solution, quote-unquote, striving to have more population and more commercial density. I don't... Even in the report, you said, you know, "Commercial or residential density is necessary for a vibrant neighborhood to support grocery stores, pharmacy, and support facilities." This is not a grocery store and pharmacy area of town, nor in fact would a visitor ever come to visit an upscale grocery store. So I'm just, I'm also influenced, I would need to understand, I think, better, what are we doing to the, you call it the livability, but if we put that many more people into downtown, and I'm not even saying this is good or bad, but if we put them in there, we're going to watch an awful lot of them come in at 8:00 in the morning to do their job and leave at 5:00 at night, and maybe they buy a McDonald's while they're here. But our community, right or wrong, has developed into a community where the people who live here, by and large, are not the ones that fill those jobs. So if you create more commercial density, you'll create more people coming in. In fact, the people that live here don't typically work here. 70% of them leave town every day. So we have this already enormous migration in and out of town. And I don't want to exacerbate that without a very thoughtful understanding of what's this going to do to this unique world-class brand that we have. I'll say again, I think you've got a lot of concepts, and some of the speakers said this too, a lot of concepts that are ideal for us to consider, whether it's to revitalize the area, to create a buzz, pocket parks, advertising program, certainly one that we've talked about. Some of the ideas we need to cross off pretty quickly, the downtown parking, paying an artist to come paint on Main Street or whatever. We already have a lot of artists that come paint on Main Street.
That's not the idea.
Well, I'm not sure what the idea is, but for $2 million, I bet you.
It is not $2 million.
So I would endorse, if we're supposed to be giving staff direction, whatever here, I would endorse those kinds of things which animate the downtown, which make it truly visitor attraction. I do not, I honestly do not believe that visitors are attracted to apartment buildings and commercial buildings. I have never seen it happen. And if they create a buzz in downtown, I would rather see a buzz that's created by people being excited by the kind of events that we have talked about, that you're doing some of, and I'll leave it at that. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Now, Councilman Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for all that you've done and all the work that you guys have all put in. It's impressive. But I have many of the same concerns that Councilman Smith has. My first thought, you know, I got this last week. I read it all last week, and over the weekend, and this morning, and studied it, and read it backwards again. And I want to ensure that we maintain and keep our very unique downtown for Scottsdale, and that we offer an authentic experience that's Scottsdale's, not anybody else's. But all the studies that we looked at are all about what everybody else is doing to attract the very same tourists that we want to attract, but attract them to them, and yet we should do the same thing. And that's not unique to Scottsdale. So that was my very first concern about all of this. I'd like to consider activities and places and events that put our downtown as a unique Scottsdale place and purpose, and that people come here specifically to see and to experience, and that makes them remember that it was in Scottsdale, not Cherry Creek or Santa Fe, that they saw it, or did it, or experienced it. I also believe that it's imperative to study our options with a very strong weather eye on products, first products that we start to do from where we are now, Karen, that has the immediate best possibility for paying for themselves. We are on a tight budget. We don't have a whole bunch of millions of dollars laying around. And so we need to use increases in revenues from what we start and what we can generate to help us pay for the additional maintenance and infrastructure that we want to create later on. And I think what we could do now is do some really basic things that I've noticed in the downtown that we need. New clean restrooms, better, more landscaping, wayfinding materials. I have a number of experiences I can tell you about things like that. I don't want to spill things and then not have the income or the ability to maintain them and keep them look fresh and clean and neat and kept. We don't need to let it turn shabby. So some of these projects will require a maintenance budget that we will need to consider when we do our budgeting. And also, some of the projects will take a longer lead time than other projects. And some will be more expensive, some will be multimillion-dollar projects, some won't be so much. So I'd like to see the whole scenario as a huge multi-year agenda, extending out over 20, 30 years probably in order to get all of these things done. But I think my biggest concern right at the moment is I don't want to lose the cachet and the reputation of Scottsdale and what we are and what we have in the process of updating and modernizing. I don't, I have no objection to doing that, but I don't want to lose the really great, strong backbone of what we are.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Karen, if I might just pose a question. You're not, you said something about coming back, and I'm presuming you're going to be going over some of what we have here before us with regard to Downtown Scottsdale 2.0 and the recommendations from staff.
Correct.
And since this is a conversation with staff, if, I think we might want to do that. Mr. Katz, thank you very much for the presentation of the study, and we really didn't want to necessarily debate it with you entirely, but we did want to ask some questions about how things were put together. So, but thank you very much. And there may be another question for you somewhere.
Oh, I won't go anywhere. Thank you all very much.
But in any case, Karen, if you want to come back then.
We will, Brian will switch out for our next final presentation, which are the recommendations from planning, transportation, economic development, tourism events. So going through this whole project, I'm going to have to go up here so I can click through. So we, staff looked at different starting recommendations. And this all comes from, again, the community input that you just heard John summarize, very extensive project. And again, that this whole study came out of the Tourism Advisory Task Force, and they did give their final and support of the recommendations in the study in terms of the projects. So we have four recommendations, and then whatever questions you have for us in regard. Our first recommendation is that staff include in our short-term type projects and related administrative costs in our operating budget process. And those things might include canal convergence for the November 2018 event I described earlier. Continue the activation of downtown, the entertainment that we've been doing, wayfinding and decor. Councilwoman Littlefield brought up a good point about our wayfinding, especially from a pedestrian standpoint is lacking. Increase, or at least continue temporary art installations along the canal, in particular, the Art Trail. We like that concept. And then to actually obtain more business development tools for Danielle and her team in economic development. So those are the types of things that we might be putting forward in the operating budget, and would recommend that to council. Our second recommendation.
Let me just, in order to facilitate sort of an orderly process on this, I'd ask council members if they have some questions or separation from any of the items that are considered in Recommendation 1, and we'll try to see if we can get a consensus of opinion as to what direction we might give here. So, Councilman Smith.
I won't let you down. I'll ask a question.
Sure.
What do you mean by the last item, business development tools?
In the study, CSL outlines, I think there's 10 or 12 different types of potential ways that we could help businesses. And I will let Danielle chime in because that's really what her forte.
Great. Thank you, Karen, Mayor, Councilman Smith. If you do look at page 91 of the document, it does outline, and CSL's given us a number of ideas in ways that we can help support business development. And you'll see anything from, they do mention a revolving loan fund that wouldn't necessarily be something that our team or even department or the city would manage. But we looked at some of our partners, maybe somebody like the Industrial Development Authority to do that. That's fairly typical in some communities. Essentially, what that is, is a funding source where, for example, that group would maybe put some dollars in that. It would be a revolving loan to help small businesses actually fund things like improvements. So if you've got somebody in a storefront that can't quite, you know, afford maybe at the traditional bank lending rate to expand into the store next door and incur those fees, this would help them get a cheaper loan to do those kind of things. So it's just an example of the types of things to explore. Some other ones would be really putting some dollars behind to buy local campaign, promoting shopping locally and doing some marketing behind that, and some staff on the streets. Vacancy programs, starting to connect landlords and potential tenants in areas where maybe you've got a vacant shop, and you want to see if there's any co-tenancy interest. So there's a whole litany of these, and what we want to do is vet these out a little bit more, see what interest there would be. And some of them may sound like great ideas, but if nobody's interested in utilizing them, then it's kind of silly to move forward on them. So we'd like to get out there, estimate those budgets, talk to a few people, and then put together a package and a recommendation for you on what those tools would look like.
Okay, well, I, the reason I, I wouldn't spend a lot of money on some things like this loan program and whatever item, and I can't conceive that we could, that we could ever be able to do that or want to get into that business, and even paying somebody for facade improvements or tenant assistance. There are lots of things I don't think we can do here, but I suppose if we're not spending a lot of money, you can look at them and see if something, some apple falls off the tree.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, and I would say I have potentially some real problems with some of the things that have just been outlined briefly with this and what I know of this business development tool. I do think we have a problem if the city gets involved with loaning money to businesses. Is that within our scope? If I might either ask the treasurer or the city attorney? Is that within our scope, if I might either ask the treasurer or the city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify, I was saying that we would not be doing that. That would not be us, that would not be the city. We would look to partners to try to encourage them to establish a revolving loan fund.
Yeah, I agree.
So it would not be the city.
I'm sorry. I agree, we would not be doing that. Okay. And frankly, if we were, if we were to even be suggesting that, we would not be doing that. Yes, okay. All right, well, that's, that's one thing. I would be very concerned about anything that even smacks of paying people to come to Scottsdale or to, frankly, to subsidize a private business. I'm all about what we might do with the environment and making sure that we're moving downtown together as positively as possible and in the development from a tourist perspective, which does imply some funding that would be available directly from tourism development funds. So, okay, well, I don't see any further comments on this particular one. With some reservations on the last one, I'll leave it at that because I don't know that I know each and every item that's in there. I, I'm going to take a gander around unless I have some objection to anything else on this. No, I understand, but we're talking about Recommendation One right now. Yes. And so I would say that I think we have consensus, in fact, I know we have consensus for Recommendation One.
Thank you.
To move forward with it.
Okay. Thank you. Recommendation Two is to develop a process to prioritize the two-pointed recommendations. Councilwoman Littlefield mentioned that a little bit earlier in her comments, and working through a process, maybe some, maybe similar to the CIP process or a bond process where we do prioritize. We would like to, to look at, at that recommendation, get your consensus on that.
Karen, just if I might ask, so this would be new staffing and an increase in the overall scope of what the city might be doing in the area. Does this constitute some of the things that might be considered for a, what do we call it? Actually, there was a title on it before, and I'm not remembering what it was exactly, but nevertheless, either a new foundation and/or a new organization with a different governance to do. Is this to supplant that or is this in addition to?
This, this, this recommendation's a little bit different, came out of some bar discussions with, with council. Recommendation Four is the one that, that, yeah.
Okay, very good. Well, I got an old slide.
That's, I apologize for that.
Well, that's.
We, we changed them up a little bit after we had our, our discussions with the council, so.
Okay.
Not drastically, but this was a new concept that came out of some of the discussion. And Councilwoman Littlefield mentioned, you know, looking at what the, all these different projects and what over time would, would we prioritize, what, what might be short-term, midterm, long-term priorities. And that's what we're recommending, that staff go through that process and come back to council, of course.
Okay, very good. Pretty simple one then. Any, any other, Vice Mayor Cordy.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I go back to Recommendation One?
Certainly.
Thank you. So we have wayfinding and decor. I, I, you know, one of the first things that our consultant spoke of and many individuals from our public comments was, you know, was that connectivity aspect and that walkability. I would like to see in Recommendation One to include that whole walkability, connectivity, creating a master plan so that, so that that becomes one of the priorities to, you know, in, in furthering this downtown plan. I, I think it's, I think it's critical for that walkability. You start walking through downtown along Scottsdale Road and all of a sudden the sidewalk ends and, and the pavement is broken. It's, there's safety factors, there's issues with, with conflicts with traffic and sidewalks and, and it just really needs some, some work.
Okay.
So if it is of consensus with the council, I would like to include that in Recommendation One.
Vice Mayor, could you, I'm sorry, what is it that you're asking to add?
To, to include walkability.
A master plan though, for?
Connectivity, connectivity and walkability master plan, which is part of, which is one of the major components of the study.
Right. And I, well, this wouldn't be duplicating the efforts that were made by Holly Street and that as far as that's concerned.
No, it would not be.
We're talking about something separate from that master plan or that at least proposed.
I believe I hear Vice Mayor suggesting that we look at, at developing a master plan around the recommendations of Holly Street and CSL for the walkability in the downtown. There's many different streets, Second Street, Main Street.
I see, okay.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was trying to say.
Okay.
And thank you, but, but we do have at least one, maybe two questions.
I have a question about that addition. You call these short-term projects. Canal convergence is already a project and we're just expanding it. And some of these other things, excuse me, are fairly simple projects that, not simple, but smaller projects that could be accomplished in the operating budget. I believe this is meant for next year, correct?
Correct.
Whereas this walkability study, connectivity study, to me, is much larger than that, and I'm not sure if it falls under the umbrella of this recommendation, number one. I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just not sure if it fits in this particular category.
We, we could include it in that we are continuing our, our work with Holly Street in particular through planning and Brent Stockwell and some others are working on that. So it is a work in progress, and I think I hear Vice Mayor saying that she wants to see us continue that, so I don't think it's really about.
So this is really more an expansion or recognition of the Holly Street project and not something new?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Smith? I'm sorry, does city staff, was there a staff request on this item?
Mayor members of the council, if I could speak to that briefly, I agree that I don't think it falls necessarily under, one, it's kind of in the, the gap between Recommendation One and Two. Here's a couple of things to think about. One, your next item where you're talking about the changes to the downtown plan, it was certainly our intent to include concepts from the connectivity plan, the public space plan, within the downtown character area plan so that they're embedded in the, the planning process moving forward. We also planned on two other things. One is as development proposals come forward in those areas to incorporate the connectivity plan elements in those private development partnerships as we do that. And then, secondly, to include streetscape proposals like we put forward for Main Street to help accomplish the connections between that. So we have Main Street in it at this point. We'd eventually do Marshall north of, you know, Indian School, you do the Fifth Avenue area, and then you'd also go back and do the Old Town area and then also come across and do Second Street as future proposals. They're certainly not short-term, but it's, you know, a, a longer-term project that you would do kind of one step at a time. Now, all of those things, certainly we're presuming that those are priorities, but with Recommendation Two, to really kind of look at where they fit within all of the other proposals might be a good idea as well, so.
Thank you, Brent. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I think my comment follows on this discussion well, and that is, we talked about the downtown area being a living museum and interesting to visit as a, a place unto itself. One of the things that makes it interesting is the vast array of public art that we have that's in the downtown area. And I became sensitized to this to, in an earlier presentation that Assistant City Manager Stockwell made to a different group. But let's make sure that we also include the public art experience in this whole reason of why to visit this downtown area, whether it's maps or whatever it might be, I'll leave it to you, but let's incorporate that as well.
Thank you, and we will and we are working on that with our new website, that there'll be trails and things like that about the public art and others.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith. And just to make something clear, and I don't think there was any objection to the idea of incorporating Holly Street as a, as a vice mayor had indicated, there's no objection to that, or is there?
Incorporating.
It into Recommendation One, incorporating the consideration on a continuing basis? Okay, so that's also part of the consensus then as far as.
Thank you.
Recommendation One is concerned. Councilwoman Littlefield?
I have, I have a kind of an odd sense about this business development tools, the very bottom item. Does that include the business incentive district or bid? Is that part of your?
No, it does not.
Okay, then I'll hold my comments until later. Thank you.
Okay.
So again, Recommendation Two is that staff look at prioritizing short-term, midterm, long-term, some of these projects that came out of the study.
I see no request to speak on that any further, so unless there's some objection, we have consensus on Recommendation Two.
Recommendation Three is that staff would solicit a private interest, the private interest in development of a conference center. So just looking, right now, we have a lot of interests, significant interests in building hotels in our downtown. So staff is recommending that we do an RFI process to determine if there is private interest and qualifications, and then from there identify any structures. This would not require any commitment or city funds to determine the interest.
Okay. Councilwoman Clapp?
I'm not interested in doing this. I don't know about the rest of the staff, the rest of the council, but I would, I know that we got some information from, from the consultant about how much conference room space is available. I'd really like to know what's available. I don't believe there's only 4,000 square feet available at Embassy Suites in their conference center. That just seems odd to me. So before we do this, I think there needs to be a real assessment of what is the, the conference room space in the downtown area as well as any potential hotels that are coming. What kind of conference space are they going to provide before we go to this process? I'm not too interested in going out and asking private developers. Do we have a space in mind that we would ask them to look at? I mean, if we're going to do a request for their interest, I'm sure they'll say, well, where are you talking about? So I think it's, to me, this is a little premature. I think it's a radical step at this point to be asking private developers to tell us if they have an interest in building a hotel with conference room space. I think we can, we can kind of look at what we have currently. I really believe that we, you know, I obviously don't want this to end up being the problem that Phoenix had, where they built a conference hotel. And to me, this smacks a little bit of this. If it's totally private, that's okay. I'm not too interested in a public-private relationship on a hotel in, in the downtown area. And I really believe we need to let this evolve more organically than to do this type of thing. That's just my personal opinion.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You know, I, I've got real reservations with this and I've expressed it before, and I will say that it's not just the example of what has happened to some other municipalities that have been, have gotten involved with this kind of thing with years of losses and then being upside down even in the sale of it. So it has, it has some serious implications when we start talking about anecdotally, we think that this is something that is necessary for downtown when, and there are, there's quite a bit of activity with regard to hotels in downtown, and they're not seeing that as their concern. We also run up against the fact that we would be potentially going into competition with people who are thinking about developing if, in fact, the market withstands it, let the risk lay with private development rather than with the taxpayers here, even with a P3 and this particular thing in a competitive enterprise. So I'm, I'm not interested in, in this at all. If there was anything that we would even do, it'd be to find out whether or not there is even a market for this. And then we have several plans that are in process right now. Who, who wants to convert some space that would otherwise be used for individual rooms for lodgers and convert it into $20,000 or $25,000 square feet of convention center space? So I'm not, I'm not in favor of even moving this forward at this point and in this conjunction with this. Vice Mayor Cordy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if, if there's some, some way to keep this kind of a, a living recommendation, but perhaps changing it a little bit. I do know, having been involved in economic development and the growth of downtown for, well, a couple decades, is that a conference center has been talked about for downtown Scottsdale for 20 years. And whether it is lack of market or lack of space or lack of focus, I don't know. I would like to keep this alive in some way because I think it's a good time to talk about it and put some focus without perhaps an RFI and RFQ, but, but to better define or, or do some research, market research to, to determine not only private interest, because I'm not interested in the city participating at all, but private interest and, and if there's a market for that. All I hear from our Experience Scottsdale, our Convention Visitor Bureau, is that it is important to diversify our visitor base, and providing a conference center diversifies our visitor base. It brings in a different type of visitor to our downtown or to Scottsdale. And it, and that alone, I think, is of value to keep this alive in some way.
Mayor and councilmembers, I just want to add one, one point to that. This, this recommendation, a lot, having attended all the public outreach and meetings with the Merchants Association, this was an item that was talked about quite often by groups like Poison, Bookstore, Poison Pen in particular, I remember her talking about how there's not any space in downtown for her to hold the types of events and expos and conferences that she could if there, there were, if there was available. And Councilwoman Clapp brings up the point of Embassy Suites. In technicality, it's just outside of our downtown character area plan, map if you will, but I recognize it's not that far away. And you're correct, it's, it, I don't know off the top of my head the square footage of that, but it's definitely, I'm guessing it'd say 15,000 square feet. But that, in the actual downtown character area, map area, there is 4,000 square feet of space. That's it for, that's tied to hotels. So I just want to make that point of clarification.
All right, and thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Karen. Councilman Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor. I wouldn't be recommending this either, although I'd love to see a convention center downtown. I don't think, it's not Scottsdale's model to go out and, and look for people and try to bring them in. If, if those people that build those things want to come here, they would. You know, they're, they're smart enough, they, they know markets all across the country, they know where they're going to make money. If they think it's a great idea for downtown Scottsdale and we got the area and the property to do it, they'll definitely come to us. And I think, you know, Danielle and her department are doing a fantastic job already. They'll come to her first. I don't think we need to add more burden on, on their work to try to go out and lure people here, you know? If they want to build it here, they'll come.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Littlefield?
Thank you. I do support a convention center hotel in our downtown, or at least looking at the possibility of it. I have heard also some people who have said it would be a really nice amenity to have. But I don't believe the need for it is particularly pressing, so it would not be a top priority item for me. Something that we could keep as a possibility for the future. There's a lot of discussion and research that yet would need to be done if we want to go forward with this. Hasn't been done yet, it's just kind of tossed out there. So I think the concept is sound, but it would have to be done by the private sector, not by the city. I totally agree with that. I don't want to put the city in competition with private industry. And it should, you know, we might be working with Danielle, she's the one that hears a lot of what people are looking for and, and wanting in the way of business amenities. And if it would be of interest or, or help to do an.
And if it would be of interest or, or help to do an RFP, to ask if anybody's interested, then maybe we could do that, just to find out. But it's not a pressing item. I do support the concept, and so I would leave it at probably a number three of your one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Littlefield. Councilwoman Millhaven.
Thank you, Mayor. I share some of the concerns and reservations that I've heard from my colleagues. Certainly, we know that there are plans to bring some more hotel rooms forward, but I also heard Mr. Cott say that a convention center would fill more rooms than simply what the hotel and convention center would be, so it might actually support the additional rooms that are planned. So I think we need to be sensitive to that, but I think it's worth pursuing in that regard. I also, you know, I agree, we don't want to duplicate what happened with Phoenix in building their convention center and that hotel. So I would look for private interest, and I see that that's what this is doing. This is saying, we have, we think that a convention center would be valuable for our downtown, and so is there somebody who'd like to work with us around it? Ordinarily, I'd agree, let the market prevail. But I think in this case, we could let folks know the city was agreeable to try to make this process work for groups, so I'd certainly be interested in pursuing that. It's interesting to me, however, that this council supports Westworld as an events venue and is willing to subsidize an events venue at Westworld to support tourism, and yet is willing to dismiss out of hand the thought of a convention center bringing people to our downtown, even if it doesn't require a subsidy. And so I'm frankly surprised that we come to two different conclusions on two very similar projects. For my two cents, I'd like to pursue this conversation and see where it takes us with a sensitivity to the number of rooms that are already planned and with a sensitivity toward minimizing any city commitment to supporting it financially. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I support what I think may have been Councilmember Clapp's suggestion. One of the easiest ways, we'll just redraw the downtown boundary, and we'll include Chaparral Suites in it, and then we'll have a convention center. On a more serious note, I'm not interested in going out with an RFI or RFQ or RF anything for this because, in my opinion, is we don't know what we're talking about. We don't have any idea whether, except anecdotally, people have said, gosh, it'd be nice to have a, a convention center. I've lived in a number of cities, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Knoxville, Tennessee, whatever that have convention centers, that just like the one in Phoenix, turn out to be empty most of the time. And I think even Councilmember Millhaven beat me to the punch making some comparison to Westworld. But what we failed to do in Westworld was ever ask ourselves, if we build it, is anybody going to come? And before I talk about building anything here, I'd like to know whether we really honest are going to need such a thing. So maybe the way to keep it alive, as some people have suggested, is study this whole idea and, and try to determine what real need do we have for this in downtown? And in fact, will it, if built, promote the uniqueness and the novelty and the attraction of downtown as a visitor attraction? That's my recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Just to continue on this just a little bit, number one, Westworld is probably a fairly unique kind of, I wouldn't even necessarily say it's a convention center, so, and even with that, we ended up with some pushback from our resorts that do have convention-type facilities, in that we were investing in something that was in competition with them, even though they are not in a position to have a horse event or a car show to the extent that we have currently. Whether or not the rest of it worked out the way we had intended, that was one thing we probably had unique in our favor as far as that's concerned. You know, if, if somehow or other, there is a sense that this is something that is needed, anecdotally or otherwise, the easiest way to figure that out is to find out whether somebody has an interest in doing it. Because if we send out anything, frankly, even a letter of interest that we're interested in having this done without really assessing this on our own, the response is going to be naturally, it was in the business that was related to this, is to come back and say, well, if you want that, what are you willing to pay us for it? Or what kind of land are you going to give us for it? I mean, that's just the way that, that system works. So I'm very cautious about getting engaged in this line of thinking at all. But if the private sector were to express an interest in it, and right now, we do have a, a new hotel in downtown that has contemplated this as well. And unlike, let me think about this, it's a pretty close call here, but unlike, geez, what is it? Embassy Suites, they are within the, in the area that we're talking about, and some of the surrounding hotels existing and being planned are considering working with them as far as that use is concerned. But that's, that's a private sector risk, that's a private sector development, somebody figures it out, and I'm glad, I'm good, I'm good with that. You know, we, we're just not in the business, and we shouldn't, we should not be in the business of competing with our tax base and other businesses that are here. It'd like be having a, a P3 gallery that the city gets involved with, or a P3 restaurant. I mean, why would we go into, into competition with other businesses by somehow supplementing something like this? And I think that's where we're at. So, you know, we can always talk about this kind of thing, and we can research and view and have the conversation open to discuss it with those planned facilities that are coming forward. But the way recommendation three is, and I think it's consistent with what I have up on the screen, the copy that I have here, I, I'm not in favor of forwarding it. And from what I hear, I don't think we have consensus to moving this thing, this forward in its present form.
Okay.
Is that, am I in great departure? Okay. We have consensus on that.
And our final?
But we, but yeah, we, we still do have a couple of comments.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
I just wanted to reemphasize that I did say that it would be good if some research were done on what meeting, conference room type facilities are available in the downtown area. And I think of Embassy Suites as being downtown, it may be on the edge, but it's still downtown in my mind. So, and it brings a lot of people downtown that stay at the Embassy Suites. They shop downtown when they stay there. So if we could find out more about that, I would like to know. And I would also find out about other things that are similar. I mean, we just have a new event center that was built across from the police station. How many people can sit there? I mean, how many people can they accommodate in that new event center? Because to me, that's similar to a conference center. And so that one's new, and there are other things that are available in the downtown area that may not be associated with hotels, that are meeting rooms. You know, we have a meeting room right over here at the Civic Center Mall that is used for a variety of things that could be called a conference. So I think that that should be also considered in the equation. And, and just to, as a side note, and I know this has not much to do with tourism, but if, if you talk about what people want downtown, it's not a conference center, they want a grocery store. I've heard that from everybody that is in, that lives in the downtown area or comes downtown, but it's not necessarily a tourist thing, but it's certainly economic development-related, and that is a grocery. And that could be something that we can encourage. I don't know how we do it, I certainly don't want to send out an RFI or an RFQ on it, but I still believe that we need to be talking to any development, anyone in the development community about bringing a grocery into the downtown area.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Cordy.
Well, we do have a grocery store in downtown, it's called Sprouts on Miller Road, and that is within the boundary. But I think it's important that, I think there's consensus, consensus to keep this alive, not in this form, but to research the viability of a conference center and, and determine, or just, hey, determine if there's any interest out there. So I, I agree with Councilwoman Clapp in moving this forward with focus, not with an RFI or RFQ.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, in a certain sense, I concur with that, but we're talking about this recommendation. So there's consensus not to go with this, this. If we want to further and say, give some direction to research and look at this from a, a more of a private, or private market or basis, then certainly I think, I think we have consensus, at least on that as well. So, and one, one final thing, too, it's interesting, and Councilwoman Clapp brought it up, and that's that just because Embassy Suites is just over the line, they'd be the first ones that'd be a little concerned about us getting involved in competition with them on some kind of P3, just a furtherance of that, as well as some of the other projects that are in place that are also trying to meet that need. So study it, but the recommendation is?
Thank you.
No.
Our final recommendation is that staff explore recommended, the recommended management structure, and then each of the suggested funding mechanisms via research, public education, and input. So I think we know that, you know, we have more desires than we have expenses, and the revenue, excuse me, and these new funding sources, whatever that mix might be, John brought, I think there was eight or nine different funding options. And what staff would like to do is explore all those and find the right mix through public outreach, through research. What are, what's the right mix of, of having a funding mechanism to realize some of these projects that are in the study?
Karen, just in the opening paragraph there, what exactly do we mean by, and each suggested funding mechanism via research? And here's the, the question, public education. What are we doing with public education with regard to recommended management structure?
So there's, there's two recommendations actually within this. One is the, what's the management structure, like, explore that? And then the second part of that is looking at the funding, the eight, nine funding recommendations that came out of the study, and doing some public, you know, talk about what they mean and what they might not mean, and, and find that right mix for, for our city.
Education in a sense of informing people of options and?
Right.
How they might be.
Yes.
Not trying to convince them or teach them or what?
Correct.
Needs to happen. Okay. I don't know that we have any difficulty, I do not personally. Any comments? I'm sorry, we do have Councilman Smith on the board and Councilwoman Littlefield. So we'll go with Councilman Smith first.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I do have some problem with it, and just spending the time to study some of these, I, I wouldn't even authorize the undertaking of that exercise. And I'm trying to remember the whole list of eight or nine items, but I think we talked about them at the time. You know, parking meters downtown is a non-starter as far as I'm concerned. A reinvestment district, where you take a vote, and if 50% of the people approve, you tax 100% of the people. I'm in no way in favor of a revitalization district, or even having staff spend time and studying it. Some of the things that were suggested are certainly spot on, and that is, we didn't spend a lot of time talking about it, but just the overall level of sales tax in the city is, is lower than any other city in the entire state. The permanent sales tax of 1.3%. Maybe that's something we ought to study, but it's not part of the study on how to deal with downtown. It's a, it's a bigger issue that the city manager is going to have to parcel out to, to folks to look at and come back to us. So I'm not sure what funding mechanisms in this whole thing that I had agreement with, but, but probably not many. I remember taxing the restaurants more than everybody else. I'm not sure that's anything that's, that makes sense for attracting tourists. The management structure, if that's kind of a separate question, then I encourage consideration of a, of a management structure, not the one that they're talking about in here that costs $2 million a year and has 10 ambassadors and whatever, but, but certainly something that consolidates the variety of people that are focusing on downtown. A considerable point was made in the report about how so many departments have fingers into the downtown area and areas of responsibility. And so if there is a way to create a management structure in our city government that creates cohesive, one voice response to the needs, I would endorse that and endorse thinking about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, from what we've talked about, and from what I've read, I can tell you I'm totally against placing parking meters in the downtown area. That is of a fundraising measure, but it takes no, into account no, the harm that it would do for our current businesses that are existing there. So I would not be supportive of that, as far as I'm concerned, don't research it. It also does away with our reputation of being a city with no parking meters that you can park for free, which is one of the good things that brings our visitors here because they can shop here for free. And I, I wouldn't want to put something that is so negative in just that one area of Scottsdale, that drives people away. It doesn't attract people to come here because they get to use a parking meter. I also do not support a, a Business Incentive District program, or BID as was presented. And I, I think it was tried twice before, and both times it led to failure, and it led to decay in our downtown area, and it led to a huge dearth of visitors. And it's one of the reasons that we're having the problems that we're having today, let's not repeat those problems and repeat the problems, the, the effect of those, of this DT, BID, excuse me. It makes no sense to me to force people who are struggling to make it and improve their businesses to tax them more and more and more through something like this that they don't want to begin with. And to me, it's to include Fashion Square in something like this, in the, in the vote for the 51%. It's an, it's an attempt to change the voter mix and create a result that you want to happen rather than what is really true. And they said, by adding Fashion Square's voice to the voting mix, there is a better chance for a bid passing. That's a direct quote from this. That's not why we do it. Fashion Square doesn't need a, a Business Incentive District. It, it, and for one thing, it wouldn't cost them a dime if we put it in there because they can pass on any of the expenses to their tenants. So it's not right to try to manufacture a vote according to what we have, and I would be against that in any which way, shape, or form. I also, finally, I don't, like Councilman Smith, I don't support the creation of a new off-book organization, Downtown Scottsdale, Inc., to handle the cash and the development of the downtown area. I would much prefer both the incomes and the expenditures to stay within the city's budget, under the direct supervision of the city manager, congratulations, Jim, and monitored by our city treasurer. I, I don't like city funds, tax receipts, or city expenses to be kept off-book, and they should stay in the, in the budget and available to everyone to see and to assess. And we have too many off-book organizations as it is, so I don't think we need another one. So I would not support that. I think it could be separate, it could be people who are focused on this particular kind of project, on the downtown, but it needs to be in our city budget. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Millhaven.
Thank you, Mayor. We've heard a lot tonight about parking meters, but I understand from our previous meetings that there's really interesting new technology where, you know, the traditional, we think you get out of your car and drop some coins in a parking meter, is really old technology, and that there's technology today that would allow us to maintain free parking in much the same way we maintain it today. But then we heard about residents and workers taking up what should be retail parking spaces, that there's technology that would allow the retail customers free parking, but create obstacles for tenants and office workers. I think Danielle, you're the expert, could you share a little bit on that?
Mayor, Councilwoman, I don't know if I'm an expert, but I'll, I'll throw out some, some comments. So thank you for teeing that up. If I can go on record and say, I hate parking meters, they're ugly, they're, I mean, there's so many things. so many things about them that are not appealing to a downtown," and so I'm with everyone on that. Some of the things that we've looked at with technologies that are interesting, and when you think about parking revenue and a lot of the research we've done along with the transportation staff, parking revenue does not mean charging for parking, so trying to be very clear about that, and I think the best example I can throw out, as I was speaking to you, and I'm so sorry that I don't remember exactly who it was, but it was a hair salon in, from downtown, that came to our downtown business gathering that we held with the chamber, we're having a discussion about her clients, and she said, "I hate these three-hour signs," because these three-hour signs, you know, at three hours, they've got to rush out and move their car with foil in their hair, and this may not all be natural, so I know how that feels, but when they're doing that, you know, they're doing that and they're moving their cars around and kind of playing this cat and mouse game, when they're there at a local small business, you know, patronizing the business, and I said, "Okay, well, what would you want us to do? Take the signs down, and then the office workers might park there, which we've had issues with?" And I said, "Well, what if you could pay a dollar for them to put a validation in their dashboard to go past three hours? What would you think about that?" And she said, "Love it." The idea is there are different creative ways that you can find opportunities for people to park, because right now, we do have three-hour limits and two-hour limits that penalize people if they're there too long, or they have to move away. So there are a plethora of opportunities out there to manage parking better, and a lot of those are either at point-of-sale or different ways to extend. So that was a little bit long-winded, but I found it fascinating just learning about it, and I think as a staff, and I don't want to totally speak for Paul Bash and transportation, but I think we'd love the opportunity to talk more with local merchants about some of those different tools and technologies. I don't think any of us, in any way, shape, or form, are proponents of charging for parking.
Okay, so for my two cents, I don't like parking meters either, but I'd be curious to explore some solutions to parking, so that's my two cents on that. In terms of the Business Improvement District, I think we need to be realistic here. Karen gave us a presentation earlier this year that talked about a $9 million contribution from the city to improve our downtown, and $3 million came from tourism bed tax dollars, and $6 million came from the general fund and the capital improvement plan. And so, and what I hear folks are saying, it's an interesting conversation, right? On the one hand, folks are saying, "Don't change our downtown, it's really special," but I'm also hearing people say, "We need help in our downtown," and so it's an interesting balance we're trying to strike here. If we need to do more in our downtown, the city doesn't have the financial resources to continue to invest at that level and to increase the investment over time. Went back to the city does reports around sales tax and use tax generation, and in the area that's the old improvement district, the sales tax and use tax that we collect is $3 million. So when we talk about the $9 million, that's not even counting all the rest of the stuff we do, like cleaning streets, and police, and fire, and all that, that we do throughout our city, the $9 million is just special and unique to our downtown. And so I think folks need to be realistic, that if you don't want us to consider an improvement district, we're just not going to have enough money to do everything you want us to do in the downtown. So while I get it, nobody wants to pay more taxes, I think we need to explore this a little bit further, so folks can make an informed decision about, do I want to spend a little more as an improvement district in order to improve my downtown, or do I want to live without these improvements? And give folks, because I think that's really what the decision's going to be. So for me, it's worth exploring a little bit further. I want to expand a little bit, too, because I managed a downtown business that was part of the Enhanced Municipal Services District that folks refer to. And it, the reason it didn't work was because the downtown, we couldn't agree as downtown businesses on where to spend our money, and so it wasn't that it was a bad idea, it wasn't that it hurt downtown, it was just that it became a political mess of neighbors fighting against neighbors, trying to decide how we spent the money. So in that regard, so I do think it's worth revisiting, I think we can learn from what happened before, the old district was not a bad thing, we just didn't execute it very well, and I do think looking at an external management structure might be interesting. I do think we need transparency and accountability for how that money gets spent, but I think it's something more than city staff can do, and even if folks say, "I don't want to spend the money on a third party," we're going to be spending the money on staff resources to do that. So I think it's certainly well worth the time and effort to explore management structure and to explore an improvement district, so people can make an informed decision about, "Do I want to spend a little more money to improve my downtown and prove where my business is located in order to get these benefits, or can I live without these benefits?" It's not unlike the fact that many of the neighborhoods pay for their streetlights with a special assessment, and so I think we need to give folks more information, so they can make a better informed decision about whether they want the improvement district or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Cordy?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the most critical point in this slide is, we have more desires and expenses than revenue, and that's a fact, that Councilwoman Millhaven explained that pretty well. We've put $9 million into downtown, and we don't have another $9 million to put into downtown next year. We just don't have it. We've also talked about the challenges, so some of the challenges that were identified through the research by our consultant is that downtown is stagnated. One council member said, you know, "There's momentum happening." Well, it's not showing up in tax revenues, and it's not showing up in sales. Downtown is stagnated, and we need to do something about that. Some of the other challenges is, you know, our arts and culture brand is threatened. It is. We've lost more than 50% of our galleries because of the, primarily because of the downturn. That whole brand is threatened, connectivity. We know that downtowns, the strength of many downtowns is a safe, walking environment, and shade, and pocket parks, and areas to rest, and go into coffee shops, and then continue on, we don't have that connectivity. We don't have that open space, that, those pocket parks, and we don't have, really, we don't have a strong transportation system. So we, what we do have is more desires and expenses than revenue, and I would hate to throw out these tools before we even research them. And, hey, I don't like parking meters either, but maybe there's some way to create some revenue. I don't like to think about raising our sales taxes to support some type of arts and culture type of initiatives. Even the prepared food and beverage tax, it just doesn't sit well with me. So what are we going to do as a community? Where are we going to squeeze the blood out of that onion? I don't see it, unless we, as a community, come together and decide that this is what we want to invest in, and it's just not the city that's going to invest. We've got to invest together as property owners and merchants. I do support a management structure concept. The, I remember well, the enhanced districts, and one of the weaknesses is that those districts were isolated. So we had Old Town District, we had Arts District, we had this district, we had Main Street, we had that, and it's really time to talk about downtown as one unit, as, look at it holistically, and so where those different districts can support each other and be one voice. And I think looking at whatever that management structure could be is one of those steps to that, and I think that's important. So I support this recommendation, and because it's really all about evaluating, it's evaluating funding mechanisms, the research, the public input, better understanding what those different revenue sources are, and seeing what we can stomach as a community, and talk, and have any conversation about it. What a concept. So before we throw some of the babies out with the bathwater, let's be more open to the conversation and see what comes of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're kind of doing a wrap-up here, I'm going to mention some other things, too, that I just felt like I didn't, wasn't able to give my input, it just really didn't come up. But as far as just as this goes, number one, yeah, no parking meters, I don't think that'll ever fly, but Danielle made a perfect comment, it's better parking management, that's what we need, need better parking management, and I think she's got, her and her team have some great ideas. The BID district, I don't think that's going to fly either, I don't like the no Scottsdale Inc., I don't like the management structure, I don't want to create another bureaucracy to tell the downtown people what they should do with their money, and we'll collect it for you. I do like the idea of revitalization district, but I think that should be yours, not ours. And I've tried to get the downtown merchants in the past to get together and create a corporation, and you can go to the IDA, and you can get better funding, and you can collect your own money, and pay yourself back, and you can decide what to do with it. But I don't think that's up to us to do. I think the city is going to do everything that's public, that we can do, and after that, it's up to the merchants and the property owners. And so I think really, in a way, you know, it's your own destiny. If you don't do anything, and your business flounders, it's because you didn't do anything. I would love to see all these businesses get together and say, "We're going to take control of downtown, it's our downtown, it's our businesses, it's our future," but I don't think the city should get involved in that. We'll do the city's structure, you do the private structure. As far as we talked about earlier, I really like the idea of the pocket parks and the connectivity, I think that's a great idea all around, that's really going to work out well. One thing that really wasn't discussed, and it has been brought up in the past a couple of times, and I really like this idea, and hopefully we can have more discussion on this, is what I call a community center. And basically what it is, would have to be the city's investment in either a building or leasing of a room, maybe around 2,000 square foot, that's like a very clean, nice public restroom area, with public safety also involved in there, and maybe some, you know, info centers and stuff like that, little gathering places where families can go, they feel safe there, they feel a nice clean restroom, that they don't have to, you know, go around behind the corner and wonder if they're safe or not. Little gathering areas where people can do that, and that might be part of these, you know, little pocket parks, I don't know. And then as far as the way finding in connectivity, I think, you know, that's a definite must, the city really needs that, and I think we're working towards that anyway. But what I brought up is, you know, we have Scottsdale Road, and then we have Drink Water to the east, and we have Goldwater to the west, and Goldwater is fairly well-developed, but Drink Water is not developed at all. I think Drink Water is way underutilized, and when you want to talk about putting in boulevards, and bike paths, and pocket parks, and stuff like this, I think Goldwater is, or I'm sorry, Drink Water is perfect for that. And Drink Water just runs so close to Scottsdale Road, that it's not like you're going way out of your way, people are going to go out of their way for it. People go to Goldwater to go out of their way to avoid Scottsdale Road, but Drink Water not so much, it's just so underutilized in so many different ways. And I really think we should be looking into that road as a way to get people to go around, to park, to get their bikes, or whatever reason they're going for. And then I wanted to just mention that, you know, you brought up earlier at the beginning of our meeting, that, you know, Scottsdale and all the things that we're doing for downtown for our holiday season, I think that's fantastic, you're doing a lot more things than I thought we would, and hopefully in the future, we'll do even more. But aside from all that, all the other things that you mentioned, that we are already doing for downtown, with the lighting, and the structures, and the signs, and all this stuff, I think you can see that, you know, as a public body, as a city, as a city and our staff, we have a very vested interest in our downtown, and we're really trying to do everything we can to make downtown as vibrant as possible. And we can only do so much, we'll do what we can, we'll light it up, we'll beautify it, we'll do what we can for the streets, the connectivity, the parks, the artwork, everything that we can do to do it, and then we sit back and say, "Okay, you know, you're property owners, this is what we gave you, you know, work with it, do what you can, work with us, and let's, you know, in that way, make that kind of a partnership, that we'll help you as much as we can with public dollars, and you help us as much as you can to, you know, embrace the public, bring them in, whatever, however you want to go about it, and I don't want to tell you how to run your business." But for when our tourists come here, and the people come here, and even the locals come here and they go downtown, that it's warm and inviting and open, and people want to come here, and that's all you really need to do, because once you do that, people will come here anyway, and they'll say, "Yeah, we love downtown, I feel like I'm at home downtown." And it kind of happens organically anyway, but let's just keep working towards that goal, working together. I think we're in the right place, I think everything's doing good, the economy is doing good. You know, I like that saying that, you know, "High tide rises all boats," so when the economy does good, everybody does good, city has more money, we can spend more money downtown, stuff like that, but this is the time that we're doing it, so let's all embrace that, let's look forward, go forward, and, you know, keeps Scottsdale the thing that downtown that it always was, and I think it will always will be. And I've talked to people that have come from other parts of the country, and I say, "Well, what do you do when you go to Scottsdale?" And they go, "Well, I heard about Old Town, I want to go see Old Town." I mean, there's, and I know some of you think Old Town is one section of it, but I think to the majority of tourists, Old Town is our downtown, that the whole thing is the Old Town, and people want to experience that whole thing, so I think we're on the right track, I think we're doing good. Our task force did a great job, staff did a great job, and so I guess in conclusion, let's keep doing what we're doing, I think we're working great moving forward. Thank you.
Councilman, if I might, because one of the things, in trying to circle back on this, recommendation four, do you have an objection with anything within this recommendation? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm just trying to get the sense of this on a consensus basis. I've heard a couple of departures, but I'm just trying to find out whether or not, for direction to staff, which is what we're really here for on these individual recommendations, do you...
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So for direction for staff, and recommendation number four, I would agree with that, you heard that, what I wouldn't go for in the future anyway, but obviously staff has to be able to look forward, and we can't say, "No direction," and then there's just nothing. So we have to allow you to continue to look for ways to, you know, fund our downtown and move further with that, so definitely keep moving forward.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment on a couple of numbers, just so they don't get branded in people's brains here, because I think they are a bit of a distortion for what we're talking about here, trying to preserve the unique visitor experience of downtown. When we talk about investing $9 million in downtown, first of all, an awful lot of that money was catch-up money from underinvestment for many, many unfortunate years. And I also, some of it, as you well know from some of the slides you saw, was for rebuilding streets, putting in lights, so that people could find their way down Marshall Way to a $13 million museum that we built. These are not investments that are discretionary and for some particular business owner's advantage. In fact, I would defend the business owners and the business operators in the downtown area, that they have made a substantial investment of their own, not only in inventory, in their business and their payroll, but in fact, in taxes that they paid, part of them coming back to the city. So this is a partnership, and the $9 million that we spent was catching up on our partnership obligations, in my opinion. Can we afford to do $9 million every year? I have no idea what the right number is, but I do know we have an affirmative obligation to maintain this visitor attraction. The fact, the other factoid that was shared with you is that the merchants only pay in $3 million in sales tax, and I don't know what possible relevance that has to anything. I guess we should only invest in the Phoenix Open as much as they generate in sales tax back to the city, or only... back to the city or only invest in Westworld as much as we get back in sales tax from the various events. What we're talking about is investing in a tourist attraction and tourism is the most important industry of our city. So that's what we're talking about tonight. We're not trying to match dollar for dollar. If you pay me, I'll pay you back. A second unrelated question because I think you're down to number four and there is nothing further. Is that correct?
Correct.
I don't know where this fits then, but I would like to have staff study the question and perhaps come back to us with a better understanding of what population number are we shooting for downtown and perhaps even why are we shooting for it? We've heard 6,200 at some point in the future and somebody upped that to 8,200 and then out of the blue, we said, we really need 10,000 because vibrant downtowns require 10,000 to support their grocery stores and whatever. And in the same vein, I'd like to know what commercial occupant, what commercial space number we're shooting for downtown. If we don't know what we're going toward, we'll never know when we've gotten there or whether we've gone too far. And if you go too far, there's no turning back. So I'd like to know where we are, where we're going, what all the approvals amount to to date and what some people who have studied this in ways other than looking at Cherry Creek have to say that should be our number. And I don't know where that fits, but I would like to see that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, I'll pose the same question to you since what we're here to do is to give some specific direction on these recommendations. And I don't know whether there's some duplicity as far as the request for the population or commercial space because I thought that was pretty well stated. I don't know if that's our number or that's what our consultant has indicated is what should be our objective. But I'll let you figure that one out as far as a response on that. But on recommendation four, Councilman, is there an objection with some specific element in this that would keep you from recommending that we continue to explore the recommended management structure, each suggested funding mechanism and research and public education?
Well, I know it's been a long night and lots of speakers, but I actually did answer that in an earlier speech.
Okay, all right, good. All right, nothing more to be said. And I presume in the affirmative then?
Well, no, in the contrary. I was saying that when we talk about some of these funding sources, there's no way I would look at parking or invest the time.
No, I understand that, but at this point in time, we're just talking about the overall review of this and what it would be. If we want to exclude specific items, and they would be, just so we know for direction to staff and whether we have consensus on excluding those specific items.
I don't think I understand the question.
Okay. You, I presume you're okay with recommendation four with the exception that there's some income or taxing elements that you're not in concert with and you'd want to have them excluded. We'd have to thus consider whether or not the full council decides to exclude those items. So if you could, if there's a way of delineating that, I'd be helpful in guidance to the council, to the staff.
Well, if the question is whether we should study and identify future funding sources, I did answer that in the affirmative, we should. I emphasized the fact that certainly the sales tax, the overall sales tax may be something we need to look at in an even broader sense than just downtown. I told, it was my vote that we not spend any staff time talking about parking. It was my vote that we not spend any task, city staff time talking about revitalization But if they want to look at other revenue sources, I admitted I don't remember all nine of them, but by all means, look at them. But there's some of them that are obviously non-starters.
The recommended management structure is the revitalization district, is it not? Or am I wrong? So what is the recommended management structure we're talking about here?
The recommended management structure was the Downtown Scottsdale Inc.
Okay.
And that's not the revitalization?
And so that's, that's not the revitalization district?
Correct.
Okay.
It could be part of it, but yeah.
Could be, but it's not. Okay. So.
And on that one, Mayor, I expressed affirmative support for something that consolidates the various activities that live in downtown.
I think that's an important point. Is there consensus not to exclude or rather to exclude a revital, a consideration of a revitalization district? I would say that, I'm sorry about that. I'm sorry about that, yes. Is there consensus to exclude or, well, he wants to exclude the revitalization district in this consideration and recommendation four. Okay. All right. How many do I have to exclude the revitalization district? Three? And how many to include?
Kathy.
I'm sorry. Four?
I have four.
Okay. Okay. Then the revitalization, the instructions and consensus is to remove that from the recommendation on number four. Is there anything else that? I don't think even parking meters are even into this thing, but as far as consideration for, well.
It's a funding mechanism.
Yeah. So do we want to review all funding mechanisms or do we want to sort of skinny it down and say certain things or not? Who's for including a sales tax increase?
Mayor, perhaps the question is, who would just like to?
Yeah. Please, go ahead.
Perhaps the question is, is, who is in favor of including all of the tools that have been suggested and perhaps more that come up for conversation? This is just to run conversation and research and education and determining what they really mean.
And that's, that is a good way of putting in a, frankly, I think we started with that. I guess I may have been premature in asking whether this recommendation was going forward. But in the meantime, we've had all kinds of things that have been requested to exclude. What I'm trying to do is find out whether or not we have consensus on those exclusions. Right now, we have majority of four that indicated they want to exclude the revitalization district. So that's not part of the direction for recommend, or rather, recommendation for. We have consensus on recommendation four?
I think so.
With that one exclusion?
With that one exclusion.
Okay. Is that?
Can I see where they hold that?
It could be dangerous, but go ahead.
My only issue with the parking thing is, has been mentioned many times by one of the speakers even, is that I'm okay with reviewing a parking management system, but not as a funding mechanism. And there's a big difference. If you're going to manage the parking downtown so that it's improved, I'm fine with that with, you know, variety of ways. But if we're going to just have parking that is intended to bring in revenue for downtown, I'm not for that. I'm not for the funding mechanism. I'm for the parking management. I think Councilman Phillips mentioned it, a couple of others mentioned it, one of our speakers mentioned it. But I'm more than willing to have a look at any ideas for better managing the parking downtown. I just don't want to use revenues for downtown because that leads to fees and meters.
Those are different.
Okay. In fairness to Councilwoman Littlefield, I would just want to ask one thing on this and when we talk about funding and that is the in-lu parking fees that are already being, so we won't use those either if we do, we don't consider that for funding.
Yeah, that's a whole different, that's a different, that's a whole different thing.
Well, that's the merchants paying for parking right now. So we don't want to exclude any funding mechanism for parking.
Love her talking, I'll talk later.
Okay, all right, okay. Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you. But tonight, I feel like I've been really, really negative and I don't want to sound totally negative on this project because I think there's a lot of very good things going on here. To itemize what I don't like about it first, as I don't like the idea of supporting artists and bringing them here from other places at the expense of our current artists. I think that's a really dumb idea. That just makes them pay for their own competition and that ensures defeat. I'm against the parking meters. I'm not against looking and studying possibilities of better management for the, for this parking spaces that we have. That's good. I'm actually open to looking at the funds that we have from that, but it would have to be carefully done that we don't violate anything. I don't support the BID idea and I don't support an independent new off-book organization, the Scottsdale Inc., because we've tried that before several times and it never works very well. But there's some really neat stuff here and there's some very good stuff here and things that I think we could do that I would like to make sure stays on our consideration list. Okay? I like the idea of pocket parks. I think those are great. Various gathering spots with seats and shades and interesting landscaping and artwork and water. I also like the idea of putting in the new bike racks there. I think that's a perfect place for it. And I agree that they're absolutely perfect location for putting in wayfaring materials and how do I get from here to there? I think that's important in all of the downtown areas and I think that it's crucial to any success that we may have in our downtown revitalization. I also think we need clean, lighted, easy-to-find public restrooms. They may not entice people to come to our downtown, but they can help us keep them there once they arrive. I would like to see improved lighting continued throughout. I believe it to be essential. Last Christmas, Bob and I went to the Christmas tree lighting in downtown and it was great. It was fun. It was beautiful and we enjoyed it very much. But afterwards, we wandered around toward the downtown areas and finally, we took a trolley around the downtown to see what was happening. It was dark. It was unappealing and with very few exceptions of people dining in some of the restaurants near the canal, no one was there. There was no movement or flow of people from the tree lighting area. It was not inviting. In fact, I was, I was really kind of surprised at how dark and uninviting it was. There was no incentive to stay, no attempt to draw people in and the trolley driver talked non-stop to the four of us that were in the trolley, but he had nothing to say about where we were, where we were going, the areas we could visit or anything like that. There was one other couple in the trolley with us, visiting from California, and she asked what there was to do in the downtown area. As we passed the darkened Museum of the West, I suggested she visit it. She didn't know where it was as we drove by. Really, an absolute critical sign that we need signs. We need wayfaring. We need people to be able to find where they are. I think definitely signage and lighting would help. It was almost a little scary. Our trolley should be a font of information for all of our travelers. There is a very inexpensive way to get the word out for anybody who's riding the trolleys in the downtown area. Not everything has to be millions of dollars. Their patter of the driver should include areas that we pass by. This is the gallery district. It's world famous. We have this, this, this. This is our new Museum of the West, which has all these different things showing right now if you're interested in seeing them. This is the Old Town. Nothing. It was like, just drive by. And I think those are simple, easy and inexpensive things that could really help. There should be bachelors, maps and any other materials that might be useful for riders in order to find their way downtown. And the last part I've actually already suggested to Rachel and she totally agrees. She was amazed. But the pocket parts, parks aren't cheap, but if we know where we want to place them, if it's a total overall concept for our entire downtown, which I really like, I think that's vital to making it happen right, then we can do one or two pocket parks at a time, see how they work. How can we improve and what do people, you know, want that we haven't yet provided and make each one a little bit better than the last? And because there's so many parts to this overall project and many of them are very expensive, I think of the three major expenses that we were looking at, and there were three big projects overall, I think it makes good sense first to look at the stadium. And the reason for that is, right now, the city is currently in talks with the Giants to renew our contract, find out what they want us to do, keep them here, what they need in the wave fields and all that stuff. So I think that the timing is right for this. It's a long-term contract with them and we have the potential with a renewal and bringing them here and the new terms, that we could actually increase our revenues from doing this substantially and help pay for some of the other things that we need. I think it's logical. Upgrades, expansion to the stadium itself and other issues can all be worked out. And I think it could help expand the use of the stadium to possible other off-season events. Moving from there to the Civic Center Mall right down the way, it's a natural movement and a natural progression and I think that should be our next big thing. I understand that the water features in the Civic Center Mall all need to be replaced, that they're leaking, they've passed their useful life and we need to upgrade them, replace them, stop the leakage of the water and make everything look up to snuff again. The timeliness of these two items causes me to believe that this is a good place to start. So if you wanted to, direction as to where to go and what to do, that would be mine. And along with all the other improvements of lighting, water, restrooms, a few pocket parks and wayfaring signs and more technologically enhanced ways like through apps and stuff like that to move people, to have people want to move from one area to another area to another area. That's basically what I, what I wanted to say. I think that it's a lot of really good things and I didn't want to sound all negative, but we have to be careful. We have to watch our money. And I think by doing the stadium first, we could enhance our revenues and this is long-term projects. So you could maybe use some of those enhanced revenues to forward our projects in the Marshall Way downtown Canal Bank area. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I don't believe anything that the Councilwoman has indicated will change the direction with regard to the previous recommendations and inclusive of the idea prioritizing. So I think we're still on the same line of agreement with that. So, hmm, all disappeared. Yeah, that's right. I knew it was something up there. Yes, Mr. Thompson, unless you now have withdrawn your request to?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I haven't withdrawn my, well, I did withdraw my request only because I think we were, we were there. I think staff realizes that recommendation four, we realize that there's complexity of all that discussion. But I think when we get into the financing, we look at the revenues, expenditures, we may go beyond the recommendations. These were recommendations made. There's a list provided in the study, but there may be more that would come up in those discussions with the downtown businesses, those that visit, those that, all that we'll engage with in this. And so I don't want to close the door on anything because I think we're going to really have to get innovative. We're going to have to look at, you know, that, that future and how best can we provide and do the things we want to do because there's quite a bit in here that we can go do and achieve. So I want to be careful that we don't start closing too many doors or guide us in a direction that may hamper our abilities to be successful in the future. That said, again, this, this recommendation here doesn't have the backbone to it of, there's things in the study, but that doesn't mean that everything in the study is going to work. Those are just ideas. That's what they, they provided us. So there are some things in there that might be great for downtown. There are some things in there that might not be great for downtown. I don't agree or disagree with everything in the study either. I've made comments publicly. Do I like meters or not? I don't care for meters. I have reasons for that. But it's something they put in the study. These are options. These are what other communities do. So I'm not saying we're going to do any or not, do any. I think that when staff really takes a look at it, analyzes it, engages those impacted by our discussions, that we bring that back to council, say, next year in the budget, we would like X, Y, and Z to do, you know, A, B, and C. You'll get to say yes or no. And I think by then, hopefully, we have acceptance of those that we impact in doing those things. I think there's some things immediately in the study that are good things we can go do, that we have funding to go do. And so I just would hope we, we move down that path. So again, So, again, I think all the recommendations somewhat generically gave us the ability to, to engage in those discussions, to move forward with some of these items in the study, and, you know, hopefully, we'll come back and, and further these discussions a little bit further. But I think when we do, that'd be part of the budget process, and we'll have to come forward with plans of how we're going to fund things, and how we're going to get some stuff done. And so we're going to have to have those discussions openly and honestly with, with those impacted. So I appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Thompson. And I suppose the only thing that was separation really from an open, particularly as it relates to recommendation four, is whether or not a district would be, available to be formed. I don't know that we, you know, I think there's three here that agree that that may be something that would be considered, but right now, I think it's, it's, it would have to be of particular interest, really, if in fact, some, somehow is concluded that that element would come back. And I mean, from the standpoint of management, and how this would all be put together or not. So, I just, only that cautionary remark, because we did, we did poll on that, that issue. So, Councilwoman Clapp?
Regarding the business improvement district, I think that Councilman Phillips said it the way I would see it, is that if they want one, they can form one, but I don't see us forcing it on them. That's the big thing.
Yeah, we can.
So, but...
We can force it on them.
But I think their feeling right now is that it's going to be forced upon them. So, the reason I'm saying that, that we can evaluate this without the revitalization district as part of the conversation, because I think that's something that the, that the business people have to decide if they want it. That isn't something that we decide. That's where I'm drawing the line on it. And I realize it can be another conversation that we can have here, but it's really ultimately going to affect them, and they need to make that decision, not us.
Well, if, just the one clarifying point is that we cannot, but I appreciate the sensitivity to it. Councilwoman Mil...
I was just going to make that point.
Yeah, okay.
I was just going to make the point to say, we can make the decision to put it to the businesses, to let them decide. That's the only thing we can do. We have no authority to leverage this, so we can't force anything on anybody in this regard.
Okay, so I think that clarifies it a little bit, as far as that's concerned. If it were to become a factor, it's still something that's presented to the public on that. So, with that, I think we've concluded the last item, and Karen's already taken her seat, so I, I'm sure that that's, that's completed, and I hope the guidance was as clear as we could possibly make it for you. So, all right, well, the remaining item is the downtown plan review and update, and Erin Peralt is moving to the podium.
I promise it's five minutes or less in terms of presentation.
Okay, yeah.
So, as Mayor and council know, we have had a downtown plan as a community since 1984. The last time we looked at the downtown from a long-range planning standpoint was between 2007 and 2009, where we updated a twenty-plus-year-old plan from 1984 that took us two years of public involvement. And that plan has been a guiding policy document, or long-range vision for downtown since the mid-eighties. It consists of six chapters today, and you can see what that is, and again, that's that 2009 updated plan. With any long-range plan, you get to the point where you need to monitor and assess for relevance and viability, and with all the talk tonight, and all the focus on downtown, it's probably a good time for us to do that with our downtown plan. In addition to that, you also assess what's been implemented under your plan, and what's happened, how the world's changed around that plan since it was adopted. So what you can see, and I won't go through all of these, I promise you, but I know you have them in front of you as well, is a lot has been implemented under the 2009 downtown plan that was anticipated by the community at the time, by city staff, and of course, city council. We have a small amount of outstanding items that we would look at under a downtown plan update, to see if they're still relevant to carry forward. And then we would look specifically at what's changed in terms of what's happened since the downtown plan, and this is just a few of the items to list. The city has been very active in adopting other types of plans that have either a small piece or a large piece of focus on downtown. And of course, tonight, we talked about a major initiative that was the last eighteen months focused on downtown. There was also the suggestion that we need a home for our public spaces master plan. Updating the downtown plan could do that for you in terms of that vision for downtown with regard to our public spaces. And then, of course, we also have a Civic Center master plan that will be coming to you for consideration in the new year. So what we're suggesting from a staff standpoint is we not take two years to do it, but take about six months to have a conversation with the community, because we know what, what we've been doing for the last seven or eight years under the plan. Look at what we might need to refine under that plan, add, in terms of the new ideas, the direction tonight given by council, and then look at a renewed implementation program, which could also include that second recommendation that you just made for downtown 2.0, in terms of prioritizing projects over a long range or a long timeframe for downtown. Next steps, if we do get your head nod tonight to move forward with an update to the downtown plan, we anticipate taking about six months for that process. Of course, it would include public outreach as it did last time, and we would keep you informed every step of the way, like we did previously. And then we'd come back through Planning Commission, and to council, we anticipate in May. So the direction we're looking for is just basically your direction, whether we should start updating our downtown plan or not this evening.
I just don't want anybody to misunderstand if somebody nods off that it's a head nod.
Right.
But in any case, Councilman Smith?
Go for it.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think, yeah. Any separation from that, please force your objection. There you go.
Thank you.
Well, with that, that's our final order of item of business. Nothing coming in the meantime. Of course, it's a work study, so sometimes it's unidentifiable, but nevertheless, it is. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Clapp.